All right, everyone. So similar to our last meeting, this one is a little bit interesting. I don't actually call the order, uh, call the meeting to order quite yet because our 1 dot 01 on this January 28th, 2025, uh, meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Before I actually call it to order, um, our first item, item 1 point 01 is the ceremonial swearing in of our newly appointed trustee, trustee J.J. Phoenix. And so trustee Phoenix, would you please come to the podium and share who you have with you today? And we are so excited to be a part of this moment.
All right. Thank you for that, Madam President. Everyone, uh, today I am going to honor and be thanked by, uh, Arlen Melendez. And those of you that know who Arlen Melendez is, uh, he was the chairman for the, uh, Reno Spark City Colony for 32 years, and he was on council for 36, and he served his community well. And I learned from him just by picking his brain, just like you do anything else with any other mentor you have, but if you ever wanted to know something about. So with that, I'd like to have Arlen come up and swear me in.
Okay, raise your right hand. Aye, stick your name.
Aye, James Phoenix.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
This, uh, the what again?
Constitution.
Sorry about that.
Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution of government, uh, of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
With all enemies, whether foreign or domestic.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of the state.
Any or-
Nonwithstanding.
Any ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Or law.
Or law.
Of the state.
Of the state.
Nonwithstanding.
Notwithstanding.
And that I will, that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
Of the office of school trustee.
The office of school trustee.
On which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right. Thank you very much.
Bravo and congratulations, trustee Phoenix. I love that. I know we don't get to start anymore of our meetings this way, but it's such a nice way to get to do it. And thank you so much, Chairman Melendez. All right. And so now it is on to item 1 point 02, our call to order, which is 2:04 PM. And I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees on this Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. And now we will move on to roll call with Clerk Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, trustee Hall.
Present.
Vice President Adam Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Nicolette.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix.
Present.
President Smith.
Present.
Trustee Westlake.
Here.
Clerk Woodley here, and student Annie Batavia. Thank you.
All right. And this brings us now to item 1 point 04. And who else could do this for us, but not the man of the hour, our new trustee, trustee J.J. Phoenix? Will you please lead us in the pledge?
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Phoenix. And now we'll move on to item 1 point 05, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin to, we begin to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Numu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nuhu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1 point 05 and brings us now to the conclusion of section one and moving on now to section two. These are our consent agenda items. And today before this board, we have consent agenda items 2 point 02 through to 2 point 12. Um, I have not been made aware of anyone pulling individual items on any of them. Um, I do have a statement to make on item 2 point 04. I make this every quarter for those of you who watch. And, um, item 2 point 04, um, requires us to provide the teacher ratios for grades K three. And I never miss this opportunity to point out to the public that the state mandated ratios are not what the state actually funds. So I will release to the universe that I would be deeply grateful, um, any of these opportunities if the state could please fund to the ratios that they mandate. Um, does anybody else have any other comments for item 2 point 02 to 2 point 12? If not, we'll go to public comment. Um, Vice President Mayberry.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Yeah, I just, uh, want to call out, uh, 2 point 12. This is the, uh, the renewal of the, uh, charter agreement with Snacks. If you recall, we had a pretty robust discussion back in December about, uh, most of our charters renewing their, their, um, their charters. Uh, we sent this back to staff, um, and they, they did their due diligence. I certainly would have been, you know, very pleased with whatever the outcome was. I see that, uh, it's, it's a five-year renewal. But again, I just want to, uh, give my thanks and appreciates and appreciation to the superintendent and the staff for, for reevaluating that and bringing it back to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President Smith. Um, so I too, like, um, Vice President Mayberry, that was a lot of work that you went into to get us that information. I thank you. But I just wanted to draw attention, uh, to the absenteeism and the re-enrollment. It, they have improved from the last, from 2022 to 2024, I mean, in leaps and bounds. And I just wanted to give credit where credit is due to Snacks for, for that improvement. So thank you.
All right, J.J., do we have any public comment for consent agenda items 2 point 02 to 2 point 12?
I have no cards for these items.
All right. I'll bring it back to this dais. I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items 2 point 02 to 2 point 12.
Thank you, Madam President. So moved.
All right. I have a motion by Clerk Woodley, and I have a second by trustee Westlake. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much, colleagues. And thank you, everybody, for sharing your thoughts on those individual items. So that closes section two in its entirety, and we move on now to section three. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And our first item now that will open is item 3 point 01. This is a presentation and discussion of the alignment of the academics organization for the 2025-26 school year to adopt a targeted approach to improve the quality of education in support of the district's strategic plan. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we have with us our superintendent, of course, Joe Ernst. And then I believe out in the audience, we also have our chief human resources officer, Doug Owen. And we'll turn it over to Superintendent Ernst.
Thank you, President Smith, members of the board. So wanted to talk with you a little bit about understanding the opportunity that we had in front of us. When I started in superintendent in July, articulated that my priorities were to complete a comprehensive review of the organizational structures and systems and adjust where needed. I've had an opportunity to do extensive listening and learning within my first hundred days on the job with multiple stakeholders across multiple, um, uh, associations. Trustees, you also discussed your priorities, which was for me to evaluate, make decisions that would result in improved academic outcomes, provide staff and student with supports, resources, opportunities for success, and increase efficiencies. Align to our community-developed strategic plan and modernizing our educational model of services for our students' needs. Most importantly, it's about improving of the quality of education that we're providing for our students. And so you can see that on the slide, how we've gone through a very methodical prog, uh, process to look at where we had operational inefficiencies, where we may have had misaligned priorities, the need for focused leadership and addressing chronic absenteeism, and the needs in special education and in behavior. Anticipating future trends. We know that we have in front of us a transformative landscape that will include our facilities modernization plan that will be occurring for the next 15 years, of which we'll hear more information on later tonight. We also have our enterprise resource planning, our ERP, which is a comprehensive, uh, platform that we will be diving into as a staff over the next year and a half to completely modernize, um, the software that our staff is using to try to get greater efficiencies. And so all of that was done, uh, with this in mind. I think it's important to understand that with a comprehensive review, we had to assess organizational capabilities, we had to identify gaps, and enhance operational efficiency, ensuring alignment with strategic priorities, and effective support for educational outcomes through people, process, facilities, and technology. So the process, it starts with visioning and really being able to work, uh, with staff around the vision for what we want our educational system to look like going forward. And so we start there. From there, we move to alignment. And when resources, when we have a finite amount of resources that we're working with, it's really important to make sure that we have alignment to maximize the value of those resources. We reviewed all capabilities and contracts, uh, to make sure that we identified gaps. We reduced or eliminated duplication or services that are no longer needed. We did this working alongside our chiefs in a very collaborative process through multiple iterations to arrive at what we think is a terrific model going forward. There was thoughtful analysis- a terrific model going forward. There was thoughtful analysis, and we recognized the contributions and the strengths of our most valuable resource, which is our staff. These are initial changes in the academic areas, and they align with the ERP and the FMP. This slide shows the design compass that we used to embark upon this lengthy process. One, we wanted to make sure that when designing and looking at organizational design, that it aligned with our priorities. And our priorities are really driven by our strategic plan. We want to continuously improve the quality of education, from PK all the way up to 12. We want to focus our leadership on aligned functions. It's really important that when we are looking at leading multiple departments, that those functions are all in a similar place so that we can really get a strong integration of how we're going forward. It's also about financial stewardship and long-term sustainability, and I think this is really important. When we look at organizational design, we're not just looking for short-term benefit, but we're looking for long-term stability, things that can last year after year, that we can plan for, have consistency around, and make sure that we're balancing short and long-term priorities. And then, it was done using many of our guiding principles, front and center. We really tried to be respectful, treating everyone with empathy, honesty, dignity, respect, and sensitivity. Really important for us as an organization that that's how we led this change. And so, what you see here is an overview of our organizational model. You can see that our deputy superintendent of academics, Ms. Tiffany McMaster, she will be overseeing the following areas. We will have a chief secondary education, an elementary chief academic officer, a student development and success, and student services. Now, it's important to note some of the changes that are occurring so that we are strengthening overall understanding and communication as an organization and with our families and for our students. We've gone back to re-titling associate chiefs to area superintendents. One of the things that we've noticed over time, previously having served as an area superintendent, sometimes there can be confusion around what an associate chief does and what an area superintendent does. And what an area superintendent does is they supervise our principals and they oversee our schools. We have converted a previous position of chief accountability officer, and we've converted that to an elementary chief academic officer. And this allocation was currently vacant, and changing this position provides important realignment and focus to support elementary academics and early childhood education. And then, we reclassified the associate chief of specialized instruction to chief academic officer of student development and success. This reclassifying of the position provides intentional focus on specialized instruction by realigning supports for specialized schools and behavioral health and management programs and systems to support our students. Now, to support these changes, there were several functions that were realigned and renamed. So in secondary education, some things of note. The athletics and activities department will report now to the office of secondary education. Students' records, previously known as student accounting, will now be known as student records, and they will be located under the office of secondary education. So I'm moving from left to right. Under elementary education, you can see we're putting early childhood under elementary education, and also our gifted and talented programming. Student development and success, we've moved the department, the multi-tiered systems of support, you can see it up there, or MTSS. That was formerly in the office of family-school partnerships, will report to this office. The behavior functions, formerly in the office of family-school partnerships, will report to the new office of student development and success. And the leadership of specialized schools will also be in this area. Other changes include research and evaluation. The assessment staff will work within the office of elementary and secondary education. It's also important to note volunteer services, formerly in the office of family-school partnerships, will report to the office of human resources, and grants and title functions will report to the office of business and finance. These changes increase our district's capacity to provide strategic leadership. And again, I would say, when resources are what they are in the educational landscape of which we operate, it's imperative that our alignment and the scope of supervision and responsibility is aligned so we can best achieve our outcomes. Also wanted to go over our success criteria. And so, on this, really, this is, we believe that the academics organization realignment is the first in a series of all organizations that will set us up for success through the following: by providing better financial stability, targeting our investments, modern model of education system going forward, increasing operational efficiency and effectiveness, reducing bureaucratic processes, improving consistency in service delivery, reclaiming employee time across the district, establishing the foundation for career pathways, and making sure we have the right people in the right roles. This includes a reduction in central office staff, corresponding increases in site-based resource availability. It's also important to note that this realignment of functions detailed today is, again, the initial phase of organizational and budget analysis. That is being developed and will share with you, the board, during the FY '26 budget process. This reorganization will have no associated cost. Indeed, by realigning like services together, we anticipate cost savings through the streamlining of services, which will begin, which, again, will be presented throughout the budget process. And finally, our next steps. It's important that we approach change management in a methodical, thoughtful, and strategic approach. And so, this continues to be at the center of our work as we're driving forward towards another guiding principle, which is around continuous improvement. And so, what we will do is we will continue to repeat this process for all other areas within our school district. We are going to ensure that we have strong transitions, and this is a major part of the work we're doing. Given that we'll have some change, we've got an opportunity over the next four months to make strong and thoughtful transitions that will lead to immediately having progress upon moving forward with the formalized change, which all occurs July 1. But we will be in much transitionary space. And then, of course, as we are doing with many key investments in the school district, we will monitor, evaluate, and adjust to ensure alignment to achieve the goals. And of course, it's always good to ground us. This is why we're here, and these are the efforts that we're bringing forward for everyone today.
Amazing. Could you go back to the organizational chart? I don't know about anybody else, but this is the kind of work that is really exciting. And Superintendent Ernst, this is why you got a unanimous vote from this board when we chose you to be our CEO. So something that my grandfather taught me is that when you point a finger at someone, you've got three pointing back at you, which the lesson always was to us, is that transformation always begins with introspection first. What are you doing? What can you be doing? By showing us that you have done a deep dive through all the layers, all the bureaucracy, all of the adopted structures over decades to reform us so that we enter into an area of really metamorphosis. It's changing. The organizational structure we had was not bad, but you don't necessarily honor something by continuing it all the time. That structure worked when it was formulated 30, 40 years ago. How can we be meeting the modern educational needs of our students and our families and community if we do not have a modern metamorphosis in terms of our organizational structure? And the fact that you have been able to deliver something for this district wisely using taxpayer dollars that evaluate every corner of these organizations, looking for efficiencies, eliminating bureaucracy, and staying focused on the investment of our greatest resource outside of our children, which is our staff, and keeping them focused and bringing them together in like functions, this is genuinely incredible. And may I ask, or can you clarify, everybody that's in the organization is staying. There is not a reduction of any existing staff we have in this model?
That's correct. And I would also say this. I want to extend, leadership is all of us working together. And this work could not have been done without the leadership of our team. That includes our human resource officer, Doug Owen, chief financial officer, Mark Mathers, deputy superintendent Tiffany McMaster, our chief student services officer, Paul Lamarcas, chief student development success, Jen Van Tress, and then our chief academic officer, Troy Parks. This was a team effort, and it took a lot of conversation, analysis, critical thinking. And I want to thank each of them for their leadership, their humility, and their efforts to do what is best for our organization and for our students. So I want to make sure that I recognize all of them because truly, it's a collective leadership effort.
And I appreciate this because what we are demonstrating to our community and to our state is that we recognize it is our responsibility to get our affairs in order so that every taxpayer dollar is being used in the most effective way possible, delivering a high-class education for our children, a respectful environment for our staff to be working in. And so personally, I think that this is incredible, and I'm very, very impressed with this work. Trustee Wesley?
Thank you. I wrote it down because I didn't want to forget what I wanted to say. I just wanted to state that this kind of intensive self-reflection, the intention to function with more efficiency and proficiency, to better serve our students and our community, you guys hit it out of the park. I mean, bravo, really.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Superintendent Ernst and the entire team at large. That now closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02. This is the milestones and momentum presentation to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of progress made on strategic plan pillars. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And with us, we have our chief academic officer, Dr. Troy Parks, our chief student and family supports officer, Dr. Paul Lamarcas, and our chief human resources officer, Doug Owen.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, chief student and family supports officer until a few minutes ago. And I'm honored to be joined by Dr. Parks and Mr. Owen. We're happy to provide you a milestone and momentum presentation where we're going to focus in on our pillars tonight. And in doing that, I'm going to back up, and I'm going to say, our goals, our five goals are really what it is we want to accomplish. We want our students to experience a strong start. We want our students to have advocacy and voice. We want them to experience safety and belonging. We want them to grow academically. We want to empower them for their future. And how we do that is largely through our pillars. We came to you a couple of times this fall. I need to jump forward. And we gave you updates with respect to academic growth and achievement, as well as strong start for every student. And in the next couple of months, we will be visiting our other three goals as well. But again, tonight, we get to focus in on our pillars. Thank you, Troy. One more. And so, I'm going to kick it off just talking for a moment about our beam. And just two weeks ago, we had the opportunity to talk about safety and belonging. And so, this is really just kind of a restatement of some of that. I like to think of our beam as our sort of through line. We have some very explicit activities that we do to support physical as well as emotional safety, but pretty much safety and connection runs through everything that we do. And in doing that, we are able to foster this sense of belongingness, which is critical for our students to optimize their learning. So that's just a little bit of a preface, and now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Parks to talk about pillar A.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas. Good afternoon, President Smith, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ernst. Go one more forward. Pillar A, so this is our consistent standards-aligned curriculum and instruction. I think about this pillar, and it always reminds me that we are here to make sure that all of our students are mastering grade-level standards. I want to point out just a few highlights and changes that we made last school year. As you might recall, we now have instructional coaches at the middle school level focused in on math in a 50-50 model. We also reduced at our one- and two-star schools, our fourth grade classes, they were getting very high. One thing that we haven't highlighted until now, though, is our new EL delivery model. And I want to take this opportunity to give you an update. We went major changes to our English language development model, and we increased our teachers' in EL as well as assistants. And then, you might have heard these English language facilitators, sometimes they're called Elfs, not to be confused with the other type of Elfs. But we're hearing really good feedback from our schools. The reason this is important to pillar A is because our Elfs are focused on making sure that in every content area, there is explicit language focus around academic language and about making sure that we, in tier one, in our consistent standards-aligned pillar A, that that language acquisition is an emphasis for every teacher. Our school administrators now walk with our EL coordinators and our Elfs into what we would call tier-one instruction, where we're expecting all kids, about 80% of our kids, to be successful. And again, really focused on language acquisition. Our feedback that we just received from principals about this model is that 80% agree or strongly agree that their English language facilitator is an asset at their site, and that about 90% of them are saying that their school site has improved and benefited from this focus in our English language development. Another area I want to highlight that I have in the past, you know, recently you approved new math adoption. We're really excited about that opportunity. K-5, we're going to be going with McGraw-Hill. And then, in middle school, we have Amplify Desmos. I've updated you often on science of reading progress. But most recently, we've been working with our human resources team on professional learning for the future. And I really want you to feel confident that we are taking a comprehensive approach about how do we make sure that when we adopt our new math curriculum and we continue science of reading, that we are integrating the key tenets of of reading, that we are integrating the key tenets of teacher clarity, which is all about Pillar A. And that is going to be infused in the spring, in the summer. And as we talk about our future three-year professional learning plans, it will be integrated into all that we do. Obviously, we also made huge investment in iReady, which is directly aligned to Pillar A. And rather than me tell you what our administrators and teachers are saying about it, we have a little video for you that also includes some student input into what we're doing with iReady in our schools. Can you play that, JJ?
I love talking about iReady, actually, because I just think that it's so important for us to be able to give kids and families the tools. I love talking about iReady, actually, because I just think that it's so important for us to be able to give kids and families the tools to be able to get them to grade level.
They remind them that the system adjusts for them, and if they get things correct, it actually will jump things.
If I kept working and doing my lessons every week, then eventually they'd give me harder and harder and harder lessons until I pass into the next grade level.
It really fills in the gaps for the students based on the diagnostic.
Each student is at a different level based on their diagnostics. So we like to do an individual meet, show them where they are and what we would like to see them reach. There's a green strip that shows them grade levels so they can see their growth with each dot.
iReady has been a good program to help visualize math equations and problems. I like that when you are trying to find an answer, it'll help you.
So the students that are maybe have some gaps in their learning, it teaches them lessons at their own level. And then students who need to be more challenged in certain topics, they receive lessons at their own topics, too.
I like that it can teach me harder stuff than my grade level. I also enjoy that it's a very fun program. You learn really funny facts.
There are some indicators like Plory, Snard. Once you accomplish it, they'll be happy, like they say, "Good job, you did it." I make mistakes sometimes, and that's when they help me.
If you pass any lesson in either reading or math, you get to come to the office and give everyone a high five. They get super excited, they come around, give all of us in here a high five, and are beaming by the time they leave. And so we're actually seeing more growth in lesson passing, not completion, based on those incentives.
We're really able to talk about data in a meaningful way because I'm going to look at yours and you're going to look at my data, and we're going to say, oh, we have these things in common, or these are things that we need to hit as a team. And so it really lends itself to teachers feeling like these are all our kids, that group mentality, that every fifth grader is everyone's fifth grader.
So that concludes Pillar A, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Lamarcas.
Thank you, Troy. So we know we're in this together. As I've told you before, I love this pillar because it tells us we must partner with our families and our community in order to optimize learning for our students. And we do that in a variety of ways. Through communication, we are creating awareness among our families, our community members, of what's critically important. By providing things such as school choice, we're empowering our families to make really critical decisions for the future of their, for their children. I do want to highlight a couple of things. Through your generous budget work last year, we were able to expand the Parent/Teacher Home Visit Program. We are in forty-one schools this year. Last year, we were in twenty-five. In the first semester, somewhere around three hundred and fifty of our educators were able to visit about twelve hundred homes. And so that's just really great work. I also want to just mention, and I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, but it's always worth mentioning, the numbers of partnerships that we have. You know, we are one office, and we focus around behavioral health and mental health and other issues. But other offices, they enjoy many partnerships. But we do have co-located services to support students with behavior, as well as social, emotional health, and probably thirty of our buildings through twenty-five-plus contracts. And so we couldn't do that without our partners. It's really important to mention that. Next, I do want to shout out to Delisa Crane and Fawn Hunter and Denise Miles, their great leadership around Native American education, Title VI, our Native Youth Community Program, as well as our new grant, the Native American Language Grant. And we have a short video that we would like to show you again that does a better job of highlighting some of this work than I can with some words.
I've been here since nineteen ninety-seven, and we've been doing the Native American Month Powwow since then. It's great. It's awesome to have the community here, the kids enjoying it, and they were all excited today, waiting for parents to come and get them dressed. And so it's a great, it's a great day today at Natchez. We are probably about ninety-five percent Native American students. We like having the Powwow during the school day so that all the students may participate. Whether they have regalia or not, they're welcome to participate.
Well, it's fun, and I like to do it because I get to meet new people. Well, it's really important because if we lose our, if we don't do this, then we might lose our tradition, our dances.
Powwows are actually a celebration that we are still here because there's a lot of non-Native people that don't even know Native Americans exist anymore. So when we have these types of gatherings, it just fills the children with pride and who they are, and to show the world that we are still here, we're still thriving, we're into education, and teaching our children a good way of life.
I think it brings the culture alive to the students. They may not live in a home that lives by tradition or practices cultural activities, what have you. So it gives them a chance to learn those things here at the school. And we're grateful that we're able to do that with our community programs, with our community members that are willing to come in.
So thank you for letting us share that. We very much value our partnerships with the Reno Sparks Indian Colony and Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and strengthening everything we can do for that student population, as well as our entire student population, is critically important. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk at least for a minute about chronic absenteeism. It is one of our priorities, it continues to be one of our priorities. As you know, we do some very targeted things, very directly at getting kids into our buildings. But this is one of those areas where really everything we do is designed to try to build connection, engagement. We want our students to love to come to school, to be part of something bigger than themselves, and we can do that. Our expansion of athletics and activities is an example of that. We were able to highlight for you earlier in the year our great partnership with Strengthen Our Community and our Community Task Force focused on chronic absenteeism. As part of that, we've partnered with PBS, PBS and their Great Things Happen When You Show Up campaign, and you'll start seeing some of those snippets in the media. We look forward to that. And then finally, our Associate Chiefs, our area superintendents have been working hard with our schools. There's a lot of things we can do to stimulate attendance, but for us to sustain those efforts and to really get better over the long haul, it's going to require integrated systems work. And so there's a big focus on integrated, multi-tiered systems of support. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas. Doug Owen for the record. And part of this is Pillar C, of course, elevating our educators and ensuring that teachers, leaders, staff can receive timely, focused support. So at the end of last school year, at the beginning, into the beginning of this current school year, we had about two hundred and fifty classroom vacancies. And part of that is finding educators and having them in front of our kids. So before we can think about giving them support, we have to hire them. We did that successfully over the summer, and yes, that included, you know, critical needs, long-term substitutes, and a lot of the things that have been approved at this day. The second piece of this is streamlining our recruitment. We did talk about a bill draft report earlier in the year, well, late last year, I guess we should say, which is now Assembly Bill Forty-nine, which helps to streamline licensing. It is still in draft form, but it's working its way through the legislature at the minute. And we contract with Oracle Fusion, which is our ERP project previously mentioned in this meeting, but also approved through this board, to ensure that we can provide support on mobile devices, self-service support, those types of things for our educators. And then lastly, Troy talked a bit about professional learning. That started with Safe Schools this year, where we rolled that out. That's more your compliance foundational training. And then we launched Steady, which is a Utah State University nationally-recognized course on classroom management for our substitute teachers. So if you do have a substitute in your class, they have been through classroom management training. So we need to improve the quality of education there as well. And then finally, the last two, some intentional focus on professional learning around the new Teacher Project mentorship program, Leadership Pathway Project. There's quite a bit of professional development going on through the various teams. And then finally, principal and secretary academies. On the secretary academies, I've stood before you before and mentioned that this is the first time since COVID we put them all in the same room, and you just watch how much knowledge is shared. And it's just amazing to watch how they each run these schools. So really, really encouraging work from the team. I'll briefly mention here regarding our certified teacher vacancy rate, which has dropped from four and a half to below four percent over the last two years. And then our ESP population, that has dropped from over twelve percent to seven, and it's even less now. So these are your paraprofessionals and different roles that are supporting your classrooms, and those vacancy rates have dropped pretty dramatically as we've staffed those positions. So with that, I think I turn it back over to Troy. No video from me.
Thank you, Doug. All right, and bringing us home for Pillar D, you are all aware of the excellent, outstanding work that we get out of our Accountability Office. I want to highlight a few updates. As you see up there, we have our school profile books. These are very valuable to our principals for school performance planning, and they often use them in their staff meetings to look at trend data and make plans to improve it. On the left over, on your right, you also see, on the right, our variability charts, which are in big and help our schools compare against each other in very relevant data points in our system. Our data-at-a-glance reports update monthly, and they highlight where our schools are increasing or decreasing based on key measures, much like we see in the strategic plan, credit attainment, behavior, absenteeism, and iReady. Also, through exceptional collaboration among many of our departments and getting feedback from our school leaders on their needs, we have created multitude of data dashboards and data visualization to help our schools with planning and monitoring their school performance plans. Our data warehouse, as you might have heard, is unmatched nationally. We feature sixty-plus reports that are accessible to all of our school departments and staff, organized by different topic areas that include chronic absenteeism, test scores, information on graduation progress towards regular or advanced diploma types. And the neat thing about this is that these reports are drillable down to the teacher level and then down to the student level, so you can get very granular. One of the reports we want to highlight, and this even has a really cool name, I mean, who would not want to look at the Early Warning System Report that talks, shows us where our freshmen are and how they're doing? And kind of while our schools do an exceptional job of making sure that freshmen succeed, this is another report that they have access to that lets them know if a freshman is getting off track, and it tracks them all the way through their senior year, and allows them to know with incredible accuracy when students might need additional help or supports. Lastly, around accountability, we know that Central Office exists to support our schools. Recently, we got a lot of feedback through our focus groups, as well as Central Office Satisfaction Survey. As Superintendent Ernst has talked with our reorganization, that's another way we hold ourselves accountable at the leadership level. With this, these survey results, we are currently looking at the feedback that we got from our schools. As chiefs, we are using that first to reflect on our own opportunities to hold ourselves accountable and to improve our departments. We're going to be reviewing this with Tiffany and Superintendent Ernst, the deputy and superintendent. And then we're going to be making plans to share that with our offices in this new organization to make sure that we're using it for continuous improvement. We want to make sure all of Central Office is timely, helpful, and supportive of our busy school staff. So with that, our last slide. We can take any questions or comments for our pillars presentation at this point.
Anybody want to jump in? Again, this is a second fantastic agenda item. If you're like me, you've been wondering, how are we doing? We're at the halfway part of the year, and there are some really important improvements that we've been making in the ways that we've been evolving ourselves, like the Schools of Choice program. That is genuinely incredible that we have over a thousand families, ninety percent, that receive their first choice. Because as we have an outstanding district and system, for various reasons, geographically or for work, different schools within our portfolio may work better for another family. And again, this goes straight to the heart of efficiency and making sure that we connect families with the best educational experience for them. And just all of this, the expanded parent/teacher visits, the awareness campaigns, the way that we're all working together is very impressive, is very impressive.
Yeah, I'll just jump in to say, yeah, this is, this is one of the better presentations. All of our presentations are good, but I really enjoyed listening to this. This is really the foundation of why we're here, you know? And despite all that stuff out there, all the narratives, all the craziness in this world today, I mean, this organization, I know, is stronger today than it was yesterday, and it's going to be stronger tomorrow than it is today. And I love how we lift up our educators. I follow a lot of that on social media. I love seeing that. So that's it, of course. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of what you're doing.
Again, good presentation. Thank you. So a new person coming in and seeing how you're tying in the strategic plan and the pillars, how they kind of intertwine, and how you're going up and down and using all that, you know, and demonstrating that not only to us but to the public, I think that's outstanding. I really do like the home visit approach, and you've probably always heard me say, if it's good at home, it'll be good at school. If it's good at home, it'll be good at work. And that concept right there, you reaching out, really motivates me because, you know, those families need that. So thank you.
I just wanted to mention that on all of my school visits, that Deputy Superintendent McMaster and I have been on, we've been seeing the intense work that our schools are doing with, in regards to chronic absenteeism. schools are doing with, in regards to chronic absenteeism and making it fun to be at school. And it's very clear that the principals are getting support from all of this strategic plan and all the work that you all are doing, because they're very similar processes at each school, but they've really given them their own flair, you know? One school's got it with their mascot, another one does a seasonal thing, but they're really similar ideas. And the kids are so excited to have the drawings on Fridays and to have their class up. We were at Double Diamond yesterday, and I just want to shout them out that last week they had one day where 20 out of 25 classes had perfect attendance. I mean, considering it's winter and we know there's a lot of colds out there, I think 20 out of 25 is really impressive. As a teacher, if I had perfect attendance in A class, that was a really good day. So it's really clear that you guys are doing great work and, and really giving this, the principals the support that they need to make sure that kids are coming to school and are excited to come to school. We also heard from a student at Poliquitas yesterday who said, I just really like being here. And that, isn't that what we want from all of our kids, right? So whatever you guys are doing, it's working. Yes. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Oh, oh.
Thank you. Sorry. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just, I, I think it's important to say that all of this, an underlying thread or a thread that's kind of being weaved into all of the, everything that the district and all of your hard work is doing is, we don't want to see any child, not one child, fall through the cracks. Not, that is such a tragedy for one child's future to be just vaporized. And there's so many wonderful things, the predictive dashboard, I, that you mentioned for ninth graders. All of this is just one more safety net to try and save these children and ensure that they're going to have a successful future. And I, I just think it's wonderful. So thank you.
Again, thank you for the questions. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the leadership of all, Dr. Lamarcas, Dr. Parks, Mr. Owen. And I think the questions and the recognition is all really positive. We certainly know that we're, there's plenty of work in front of us, and we continue to work hard to improve chronic absenteeism as, as well as deepen the pillars and the work there so that we achieve the strategic plan goals that, that we've targeted. But the leadership from each of you is instrumental in us moving forward, and so I just want to say thank you as well.
All right. And that now closes item 3.02. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Really appreciate that. It is good to see milestones and momentum. I love it. We're definitely hitting milestones and we definitely have momentum. And we'll go on now to item 3.03. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to accept the pre-K8 study and to provide direction to the superintendent to implement the recommendations to proceed with new pre-K5 facilities on the current Edward L. Pine Middle School and Fred W. Trainer Middle School campuses. This is an item for possible action. And we have a stellar team with us, our chief operating officer, Adam Cersei, our lead secondary associate chief, Lauren Ford, and from Canon Design, Paul Mills.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Adam Cersei for the record. Thank you for that intro. This is an item for action and a recommendation on a study, but I want to set the context and the background just a little bit upfront. This is stemming from the outcomes of our 2023 Facility Modernization Plan, yet one of many steps towards executing that entire plan. So a little bit on the background. As you recall, in the midst of that study, the board took action to initiate the first real FMP-related project and about two years ago, approving the design to proceed at Vaughn Middle School, which has a direct relationship to our opportunities here this evening. About one year ago, the board was able to approve the entirety of that FMP. That, as you recall, was founded on principles of facility equity and efficiency across our entire district. But specifically, as you can see in this excerpt from the actual FMP, made specific recommendations relative to the schools we're discussing tonight, including Smith Ridge, Dodson, Duncan, and others. So proceeding immediately on that work, once the FMP was approved, we began implementation or execution of the recommended continued study. Again, with an excerpt from the 2023 Facility Modernization Plan on the screen here, you see that the recommendation was to consider the merits and conduct a study as to the feasibility of a pre-K through eight type of school or a pre-K through five type of elementary, traditional elementary school on both the specifically Pine and Trainer campuses. That's the way it was recommended in the study. And that the work was intended to be twofold or dual-purposed, as it says on here, not only to make a recommendation relative to that specific scope, but also to establish a body of knowledge or an implementation toolkit that we might reference in, in years to come. And so that's really the work that has been done and that my colleagues are going to describe in more detail tonight. But at the risk of, you know, completely spoiling the surprise, wanted to just come right out and make it clear that the recommendation upon tremendous investigation and engagement is to proceed with the construction of new elementary schools at those locations to serve those immediate communities, Smith Ridge, Dodson, Duncan, Lemelson, and possibly others. Now, I want you to hear about all those details, but before they dive in, just know that these outcomes are made still in alignment with those original guiding principles, providing a higher degree of facility equity and facility efficiency to those students and all the students we serve, but also doing so with the voice of the community and within the context of those specific communities and with flexibility master planned into these thoughtful recommendations. So that's a quick background, but you really got to stick around for the meat. I want to pass the baton over briefly to Paul Mills next. Thank you.
President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be in front of you to present again today. For the record, Paul Mills of Canon Design. So this study builds on the 2023 FMP, as Adam was asserting earlier. And we structured a process, designed a process specific to our very focused scope of work that is really in the model of the participatory nature and foundational nature of, that the FMP was designed under. But it's really designed to address our specific charge, and I just want to make sure that that charge is pretty clear for you and for anyone that's tuning in. But first, to facilitate a conversation and study of the pre-K through eight grade configuration to really see what's working and what's not around the country, right? To create operational models, how might that work here in Washoe County School District? And to test these models as far as feasibility and as well as community receptiveness to these models. And finally, to make recommendations to inform these specific projects that Adams was alluding to for Pine and Trainer and the related verticals that feed to them. But whether they should be designed as pre-K through five elementary schools or pre-K through eights. Our charge was not to relitigate the trade-up strategies that were part of the FMP. Moreover, we're not here to sell pre-K eight or any grade configuration. It was really in earnest and with full transparency to investigate whether it had merit and to engage community and stakeholders so that they had the opportunity to weigh in. And right now, Dr. Ford's going to describe a bit about this process.
President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of trustees, Lauren Ford, secondary associate chief, thanks for having me today. Go ahead. We began with, thank you. We began with discussing some guiding principles. We wanted our groups to come together and stakeholder groups as we met and not have any preconceived notions. We wanted them to be open-minded. We wanted them to always keep the students and communities at the center of our work that we began. And we wanted them to explore possibilities, weighing all options, which brought us to looking at different research and case studies. You'll see high-level advantages and disadvantages on here, and that's what we wanted them to dig into. We wanted them to make the best decision possible for our organization while looking at all of the possibilities that were out there when they made those decisions and when they were doing those fact-finding missions, what was best? What was out there? What worked? What didn't work? We always wanted them to also keep in mind those guiding principles. Do not come in here with preconceived notions. The different stakeholder groups that met, you'll see them all listed here. And I think I can say that there were robust, passionate conversations in these meetings, which is exactly what we wanted to happen. Our final decision you'll see is an outcome of these groups, their passion and their beliefs and what they wanted to see. After we had all that authentic dialogue, we brought it to our operations side of the house. We had a meeting with finance where we sat down and we really dug into the financial impacts of a K8. How can we offer different opportunities to students? What would that look like? How much of an impact that would have? And then Paul is going to go into more detail at some of those facts that we found out as we dug into that with the operational side.
Great. So I'll give it. I'll be giving you an overview of the detailed findings that are in our more detailed report quickly to get through it to support our recommendation. We organized the findings of the study under four key findings that we'll describe here. First finding, number one, is that pre-K eight grade configuration can be successful and has merit for future consideration. Roughly one in eight students from grades Kinder through eighth grade are attending a K through eight school in the United States today, and it varies from state to state, region to region. You can see areas like your neighbors in California and Arizona, which have a higher preponderance of students at that age level in pre-K through eight schools versus a lot of areas like Nevada that are lower. One thing of particular note is that this predominance tends to be biased towards charters. Charter schools have a lot of K8s, and there are some here in your community as well, some of them listed on the bullets there. The growth within Nevada and across the United States tends to be in those charter school areas as measurable here. It's not to say just because everyone's doing it, we should too, but it did set the table for conversation and measurable results. So we had conversations with peer school districts around the country that we recruited to participate and engage dialogue with the task force members. This is teachers and administrators, principals and such that were able to communicate with their peers and investigate, hey, what was working well? What didn't? Now, while all of these school districts we spoke to had successful pre-K eights, we did not cherry pick. We wanted to recruit those that had challenges, those that shared similar characteristics to Washoe County School District in terms of scale, being urban, and a large complexity in terms of diversity within the school systems. And we found some cases where they really struggled and they had a lot of lessons learned to share. The key takeaways that are listed here, I want to single out a couple of them that relate specific to our recommendation today. And if you go halfway down, size matters. We reconfirmed our predictions and preconceptions that the scale of a pre-K through eight school with the smaller number of students per grade cohort yields fewer teachers, which means in order to have a diversity of, of course offerings, you need to have large scale or a disproportionate investment in teachers at those grade levels or both, right? That was confirmed through these conversations. I also want to go down to the bottom of the list. Community support is essential. We heard time and time again that doing a transition with the community and not to a community was something that was, some lessons learned from failed scales. When going back to the, the size matters point, I want to shout out to a former client of mine and also great folks at Long Beach Unified and the greater Los Angeles area. But Long Beach USD has for decades had pre-K through eight schools. And while they validated that size does matter, so much so that when they have encountered declining enrollment phases, which they're in the middle of right now, the scale of the schools and the available budgets to invest in the schools led to a determination of reverting some of those K8 schools back to elementary schools, which means that pre-K through eight, while with the merits that can be measurable in, in research and data, also have some downsides and vulnerabilities, particularly in declining enrollment phases, which right now we know that Washoe County School District's projection, or enrollment projections tend to drift downward as well. Right? So we did some secondary research, seeing what others have studied and published on the subject, and we did our own primary research. And while there's no universally conclusive set of research that says, aha, this is a cure-all for all cases, that is not the case. However, there are some interesting points of note that we researched and shared with and discussed within our task force areas. But looking at student performance indicators like absenteeism in the chart that you see here, looking at proficiency levels, looking at behavior issues, there appears to be some correlation with the grade configuration as well as, you know, the, the potential that fifth to sixth grade transition year having an impact on some of the results. We also, as, in addition to determining that, yes, there is merit for consideration, there can be success with that grade configuration, we did go back to the FMP assumptions when we developed options for these two areas and reaffirmed, reconfirmed that pre-K through eight options are indeed, remain feasible. We did a refresh, updated enrollment projections from the time of FMP to now. And we also did some secondary looks at the charter impacts and things that aren't necessarily measurable in the projections now, just to do some what-if scenarios and some stress testing on some of the assumptions. We looked at all the various rezoning options potentially that could spring forward with it, and while it wasn't a rezoning process, we did validate that those options still were valid today. We did talk also with operational units within the district, transportation, maintenance, custodial facilities, nutrition services, to talk about the impacts and what the grade configuration would tell. And the, the grade configuration itself seemed more negligible as opposed to just looking at the notion of increased transportation, for instance, with consolidations and those sorts of things that we knew going in that will be offset with other efficiencies. We also looked at the ed specs, which is your recipe for what goes into your new facilities today, both elementary and middle school. And we have kind of a composite recommended ed spec for a pre-K eight school, if and when the district would want to do one, and test fitted them on the sites in question. So the third finding is really stems from the guiding principle that whatever scenario it is that all students must have equitable access to programs regardless of grade configuration, particularly as it relates to zone schools where it's your default where you go to school. We had a little subtle permutation on magnet schools that we can get into if you want. But we modeled out taking the elementary and middle school, the prevailing staffing allocations that are operating right now, analyzed those, and compared them to where we want to take the teachers, how we would apply enough scale and subjects so that we can have equitable access to programs at those middle school grades. We had models for comprehensive and magnet programs built on that mandate for equity. And the finance department, WCSD, big shout-out, ran all the numbers and, and measurably confirmed that there is an additional cost associated with operating an equitable, done-right, pre-K through eight model here at Washoe County School District. A couple other points about staffing that we mentioned in the report that are worthy of note here, too, is that in a pre-K through eight model, that the sorts of teachers that you rely on to make this happen are unicorns. These are ones that can teach multiple subjects, are willing to do multiple preps, takes a level of dedication that is extreme. Also, the, here in Nevada, the licensing for teachers pre-K or K through eight and then seven through 12 is a bit of a barrier around working solely pre-K through eight grade configuration in that you might have some middle school teachers today that are teaching seventh and eighth grade that might not work out quite as well, and you wouldn't have the flexibility that would be a benefit in a pre-K through eight model. And then also, there are very few pre-K through eights in the state of Nevada compared to traditional elementary schools and middle schools. And then also, there are very few pre-K-8s in the state of Nevada compared to traditional elementary schools and middle schools, and much less so here in Washoe County, meaning that finding leadership for these schools and retaining leadership might be a vulnerability in that sort of model. And our fourth finding speaks to our engagements with the community and working with the different focus groups that started with students, as well as teachers, principals, parents and community members. And we had some very, very good conversations with these communities, really laying down that we're not here with a preconceived notion or selling a grade configuration, we're actually studying and we're listening. And I'm here to share with them that they hopefully are watching and observing today, but their voices were heard in this process. The number one concern that they shared was the notion of safety. We heard anecdotes, you know, stuff that brings you to your knees, hearing from students about behaviors and violence at the middle school level. And there's a real concern about exposing the younger students in elementary schools to that under the same roof. And while the peer districts that we spoke to spoke to how culture can mitigate that and that a transition model going year by year, pre-K-5, pre-K-6, pre-K-7, and graduate up into a full pre-K-8 can be a way to transition the gap. However, just hearing from your communities today, the receptiveness just is not the right time for the Pine, Smith Ridge communities, as well as Trainer, Duncan and the neighboring schools around there. So finally, that brings us to the recommendations that Adam spoiled earlier on. But that's to stay with your current pre-K-5 and 6th through 8th grade configuration that you have standard just about throughout the entire district. And to proceed with the closure of Pine and Trainer, and that would be around 2026 for Pine and 2029 perhaps later, depending on the enabling projects that would allow that to happen at Trainer. That would create room on those campuses to build new pre-K-5 elementary schools that would house the existing programs that you have at Smith Ridge and Dodson, and then Duncan and Lemelson, and the neighboring schools potentially around there as well, pending zoning action that would take place. A few characteristics about this is that it's consistent with the initial FMP. These were options that were considered early on and was kind of a toss-up between this or a pre-K-8, which led to this study. It's also consistent with your facility standards. With the one caveat is that we have recommended to do some slight permutations on your existing elementary models such that you would have your core spaces towards the perimeter in a master-planned way so you could, in the future, expand and do a K-8 by having a 6th through 8th addition. But we're not recommending you do that now, just keeping options open for the future, while not spending a lot of excess money should you make that decision again in the future. And also finally, that all this work is done and compiled in the report in a way that can be referenced later, that speaks to a lot of the lessons learned we heard from other school districts and could be applicable in the future should WCSD want to consider this grade configuration again. And one more point, the graphic on this page, these are from presentations we made in the communities around Trainer and at Pine. And the graphic around Trainer was before the schedules were set in the FMP. And I'm the guy that missed the fact that the dates on there suggested an earlier timeline that could have been done. However, the FMP resulted in a later schedule for Trainer, so I just wanted to signal out that while the graphic shows that it could have been done earlier, we're saying that Trainer is probably in the 2029-plus sort of range. What might that look like on the sites? For those that are accustomed to looking at site plans and this sort of thing, we have second floor kind of hovering over, but we studied the sites and looked at them where you look at the existing footprint of the Pine campus, potentially a renovation, breathing whole new life into the building or reconstruction once it's vacated. But you can see that the pre-K-5 in yellow has its space with core spaces that are towards a perimeter where there might be an addition built in the future with planned separation, as well as separate entrances to alleviate concerns around safety and mixed cultures. To the timeline for this, what might this look like? So here, we're not ignoring Trainer, they are in the future beyond this, but we're looking very near-term. And it does speak to the immediacy of need because there is an opportunity to be able to build this new elementary school for the Smith Ridge and Dodson communities right across the street from Smith Ridge at the Pine campus. That could be opened in 2028 if the board were to take action and give direction now to initiate the design of the construction project. So a quick recap here, we had four main findings from it that pre-K-8 as a grade configuration can be successful and does have merit for future consideration. It is feasible on these two sites and potentially others across the district. It does require increased staffing and cost when done right as designed by this task force. And that currently there's limited support within the Pine and Trainer communities for this. And because of all that, we recommend to proceed with the new elementary schools to serve those communities mentioned at the Pine and Trainer campuses. With that, we'll take any questions.
I was hoping to jump in a little bit before the questions come. First, I have a number of things that I wanted to share. Thank you for the presentation and the analysis that's been done. And I wanted to back this out just a little bit to the foresight that our chief operating officer, Adam Circe, has had when we're looking at declining enrollment throughout the public schools in the United States and being well ahead of the curve relative to many other school districts that we see nationally right now. And I think this was a really good example of how we want to engage our community as we are using a plan that has been created with flexibilities to hear the voice and be able to react and respond accordingly. And so as we start to embark on the first phases of our facilities modernization plan, I think this is really a shining example of information being brought forth, thoughtful analysis, outreach to our community, feedback from our community, and really using that feedback to go forward. So I wanted to say that because I think it sets us up for exciting work as we're going forward with the facilities modernization plan over the next 15 years. And this is a really good step in that direction. And again, I appreciate the leadership and the engagement from our community that has occurred relative to this study. And given many of the details that are in there, just again, and I think it's been said on a number of occasions, it's really a recommendation that comes down to a PK-5 school that would be built on the current Pine Middle School property. That really would, in many, it would be Smith Ridge, as well as potentially some other schools as well, but it's Smith Ridge on the Pine Middle School campus. Just to try to make sure that everybody's clear on it, because there's just a lot of detail out of there, and I just wanted to make sure that we put a point on that.
Well, thank you so much for this incredible work. And Neil, let me know if this is a question for this item or perhaps the second. I love where you landed with this. It keeps an eye for the future, we have options, we see how the community grows, I think this is great. So my question is, pending a vote, we could be making a decision to accept the recommendation for the site where Pine and Trainer currently are located now, knowing that new elementary schools will be built. In the event we make that decision today, those communities will know the fate of those sites and immediately families in those communities or to the schools near them may want to know who is going to these schools. So pending today's vote, is there a plan in place to start to address that? And I'll get to why. As we design what the new Smith Ridge looks like, I would want to make sure, potentially our board would want to make sure that all the communities that will be at that school have an opportunity for their voices to be involved with the original design of what that school becomes because they're a part of it from inception and not necessarily added on to it based on what another community spoke about with what they needed. So could anyone just kind of talk a little bit about what could potentially happen after today?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. Thank you, President Smith, Adam Circe, for the record. So in the example of the new Smith Ridge Elementary School, for example, as the Gantt chart, the schedule showed, the first step, and we're going to see this on the next item actually, would be the vacating of the current Pine Middle School, the temporary closure of the Pine Middle School. That can't occur or is not suggested to occur until the start of the 26, 27 school year, as made possible by the opening of the new Vaughn Middle School. So then in the next item, it goes on to talk about the reconstruction work that will need to occur, which is anticipated to take effectively in two full school years. So it wouldn't be until the fall of 2028 that these school enrollment zones would be modified and these communities would be coming together. We've had good success with community engagement and precedent and high-quality work associated with enrollment boundary adjustments, working through our zoning advisory committee. And the general pace at which we've done that is to have those conversations and bring that recommendation up to the Board of Trustees for action, a school year in advance of it going into effect. So in this specific example, these communities come together in some form or fashion in the 28, 29 school year upon the opening of this new elementary school. That would mean that during the 26, 27 school year, we're having those conversations with the zoning advisor committee, the community, the public, making those decisions known so that in the intervening year, the 27, 28 school year, that's when they are really naming that principle, building that culture in that community. Now, that's, those are when the decisions are made. Today is a strong signal in that direction. I mean, I feel I need to say it like by the letter of the law, sort of, but this is an important clarifying step towards the future for this community. And, you know, we need to be careful what we say in terms of making promises, but the recommendation is to move in this direction. And that wouldn't preclude the community from beginning to move in that direction in other ways in the meantime, but administratively, sort of in sequence with the physical activation of this change, it's a bit further into the future.
Thank you, President Smith. Depending upon what elementaries may roll into Pine, so Smith Ridge, but some outlying elementaries, what would the impact be for our transportation? More school buses, more bus drivers? Some of those, the kids, it's in a neighborhood school, so they just walk to their little elementary school. They haven't had to ride a bus. Now they're going to be dependent on a bus. So what would that impact be potentially? I know we don't know what schools yet, but potentially, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, building on the precedent, you know, there were excerpts from the FMP by design. The specific text in the FMP spoke to a combination of enrollment zones between Smith Ridge and Dodson. In that scenario, both old schools would close. In the case of the Smith Ridge enrollment zone, not much geographic movement. In the case of the Dodson enrollment zone, to your point, many of the students who are currently within the walk zone of Dodson would now be outside of the walk zone to a new elementary school, New Smith Ridge-Dodson Elementary School. And we would have to go through the details of funding and providing that service. These are the types of conversations that the zoning advisory committee often wrestles with. Hey, is this particular scenario going to trigger an additional bus route? Or can it be absorbed through some redistribution of providing those services? I think fundamentally, as we look forward, the board should, you know, be clear-eyed on the reality that school trade-up scenarios and school consolidations may result in some students who currently are within a walk zone being zoned into a school beyond their walk zone. But overall, you know, it's in the best interest of facility equity and efficiency for the district. And we'll get into those details, you know, on the timeline I described.
So as many of you know, I served on the Facility Modernization Committee and was the chair of the Zoning Committee, so I spent a lot of time with this work. And so first, I just want to say, I am so grateful that our district took the time to do this study. We were in the middle of just kind of getting community feedback, and we had some community meetings where some people said, what about a K-8? And instead of just, you know, saying, no, that's not even possible, I just really want to commend you all for taking that step to make sure that our communities had all of the information and had the opportunity to really give that feedback and make some, you know, their voices heard. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate that. Having grown up in this school district and going to some of the older schools and knowing how those are really not modern learning facilities, and now having the opportunity to be in and around our modern learning facilities, I know how, one, expensive it is to run our older buildings and how difficult it has become to repair them. But also really thinking about what our students deserve. And I love that we're giving that opportunity to all students in this district. You know, when we first passed WC1 in this community, it wasn't just for our overcrowded schools. The promises made with WC1 were that we were going to give all students in our district modern learning facilities. And I think it is so important that we continue that conversation with each community and make sure that everybody has a say in that. And I just want to commend your team for continuing to involve them and ensuring that all students in our community, I love that we're investing in neighborhoods that haven't had opportunities for updated facilities. And let's be honest, some of our buildings have seen better days. And so I just wanted to shout out you all for the work you're doing. But also, I think in response to your question, I think the cost savings that we're going to have for not having to pay the expensive, you know, repair bills for some of these buildings, I think that will probably offset a little bit. I don't know the details because that's definitely beyond me. But yeah, I think that we will see that we are actually benefiting our district, but more so we're benefiting our students beyond it. So, thanks, guys.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mike Dixon.
Welcome, Principal Dixon. Thank you for being with us.
JJ said I'd get an extra zero. Ready. Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. I'm Mike Dixon, the principal of Smith Ridge, and I'm really excited to be here today to just talk about the upcoming decisions with our campus. So I really appreciate the information that's in the report regarding community input. When this process began, there was some confusion with our families due to the reference to a new Pine school as elementary families did not understand the decision would impact them. As parents began asking me more questions, it did become apparent we needed to have some additional parent meetings. And I'm thankful that Mr. Mills, Mr. Circe's teams, were able to host a parent event at Smith Ridge last May and is very well-attended. And I believe there may still be a debt owed on a wager due to the number of attendees. Mr. Circe. There's about 100 people there, it's incredible. So I've been a principal for 10 years, and I want to share about my experiences to hone in and two specific issues that have led me to not support a K-A model in the community such as Neil Road, and those two areas are instruction and safety. You know, around 2015, 2017, there became a lot of media regarding overcrowding at Double Diamond. And at the beginning of that work, as advocating for WC1, as you just mentioned, prior to returning to multi-track, we had about 1,000 students on campus. And I'm pretty sure I'm one of the few district employees that has been a principal of a 1,000-student elementary school. When I arrived at Smith Ridge in 2018, we had about 720 students, and today we have around 500. And fun new fact, we have the highest percentage of EL students of any campus in the state, which is about 53%. I truly believe the primary function of a principal is instructional leadership, and it looks completely different when you have 1,000 students on campus versus 500. The larger your campus is, the more diluted your time is. And initially, when we began discussing a K-A model, numbers being shared, we're in the 1,200 to 1,400-student enrollment range. In regards to safety, our students, when they age from 5th grade to middle school, they certainly begin to have more freedoms, less supervision, access and exposure to things that probably some of us would agree aren't the healthiest. And no matter how incredible our school culture and climate is, those influences are going to be evident on campus. It's that reason. It's that reason that I'm most concerned to have our youngest learners on the same property as our middle school students. On a final note, it's so exciting that there's going to be a new campus in this part of town for so many reasons, I could talk about that endlessly. I'm incredibly proud of the work our community did in coming together. We have a parent here today to speak, I think that's fantastic, and the passion and involvement with our community, um, I'm very proud of, and makes me humbled and excited to continue our work in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Dixon.
Antonio Angulo.
Welcome, Antonio, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, Superintendent, members. Um, so I'm one of the parents that actually attended, uh, both meetings. Um, you know, you saw my picture up there, uh, or me on the news or whatever. Uh, first, I wanted to thank, uh, Ken and Zine for, you know, attending both meetings for the community, uh, hearing this out. Um, I don't think I'm going to take three minutes, but, um, I kind of just want to echo, um, the recommendation, um, and I want to echo it mainly because I live in the community. I, I live right across the street, I see what's going on, I, I, I work with, with, with the school and stuff like that. But more importantly, um, I want to make sure that future leaders, uh, and everyone around gives us the opportunity to have that word, uh, gives us the opportunity to actually see the full spectrum of what our children are going to be exposed to. My girls are going to be out by the time this is going to be, uh, put forward, but I want to make sure that safety is not just implemented in the future, but there's safety right now. Uh, we don't see any measures of control right now. At both meetings that we were, uh, or I attended, um, I don't see... I don't see how... the community needs to paint out a picture that we're not. Um, you know, I invite you guys to come out more. Uh, I, the, the other presentation was fantastic, you guys are doing more, I've been able to, uh, see more leaders out. Um, so that's the only thing I really have to say for us. Uh, just, I invite you guys to continue to be working with the community. Um, I invite you guys to continue to, uh, look at all aspects of safety. Um, and I hope these, because what got us here is under utilization and basically attendance is what it, how I'm, I'm understanding it. I hope these facilities go to a teen center, you know, it goes to more outreach programs, uh, homeless shelter, who knows? But that's it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Nava Duran.
Well, I will support this, uh, agenda. I will approve the agenda, I would say Paul Mill, um, Seaslee, and I don't know what turn Lauren Ford, Dr. Ford. For this, uh, I feel like the K, the, I went to community, both, uh, many community has spoken that didn't want K to A school, the proposal of a whole string, getting violence, a proposal to younger teen. So as a, as a substitute teacher who, who worked at Pine Middle School across the street from Smith Ridge, so I thought that when I, when I go to after-school, walk outside, I saw many students hanging out at Smith Ridge Elementary School, talk to younger student him, and ask the staff, say, hey, you go out, if you go to... I'm sorry. I don't know what they're saying, because I live like ten, twenty feet away. I feel like this is not a good idea. I mean, community spoken, Pine and Trainer, and also I do support a new elementary school, a new Smith Ridge elementary school, but, uh, including a new principal, I'm not sure Mike Dixon will be here, or could be new principal, could be names like, for example, Oscar Dargado Elementary School, or bringing in a new culture, a new school color, and a mission statement, uh, mission fitting statements, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nava Duran.
Kalen Evans.
Welcome, President Evans.
Hi, thank you, name's Kalen Evans, President of the Washoe Education Association, and I wanted to echo, um, what Superintendent Ernst said and, and some of the board, just the appreciation for the involvement, um, especially from a staff standpoint. You know, we had a lot of folks reach out when kind of rumors about this were going on, um, you know, a lot of concern around it, and they had multiple opportunities to be involved. Um, it just really is encouraging to, to know that our staff and our, in our community are being so actively involved in these decisions, and it just makes them feel represented. So thank you for that and all the time, um, uh, Mr. Searsley, that's your team put into, to really connecting with the staff as well. Um, and, and I think this goes along with this agenda item, so, you know, Madam President, forgive me if it doesn't, but, you know, I think when we're talking about, you know, these changes, we also need to start having some really thoughtful discussions around what we're going to do with some of these existing buildings as we are consolidating, um, uh, with different school sites. And I think when you have an appreciating asset like, um, like real estate, it's something that is a huge benefit to the district if we start to look at how we can best use these facilities. And I just want to kind of put the bug in people's ear now, because there are some districts doing some really creative, uh, work around affordable housing. Um, if you think about, uh, the cost of living, um, here in Washoe County, it's, it's significant, as you all know, those rates are continuing to go up, we're looking at about sixteen-hundred for a one-bedroom. Um, I, you know, I think about our starting teacher salary, we're still at about forty-five, we have essential classified staff who are making less than twenty dollars an hour, and when we think about the ability to retain staff, which is the absolute, in our opinion, most crucial component that we need to address, is the attraction and retention of, of qualified staff. I think that there are some districts doing some really innovative work around affordable housing. And so I think that this is, those are the times that we need to start having those discussions on what the possibility of what that could look like, how we can use those to retain, um, staff and then recruit new ones. So I just want, I thought that this was a, a good time to kind of bring up those conversations, and, uh, we would love to be involved in those discussions and helping provide information. We have a lot of connections nationally with districts that are doing this work and that have already done this work, so we just want to be a collaborative partner in this regard in any way we can. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, President Evans.
The board received emails from Elise Hansen and Burke Kimber related to this item.
All right, with that, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the pre-K to eight study and directs the Superintendent to implement the recommendation therein.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Hall, we have a second by Trustee Westlake. Make sure to get your light on, so nobody else can beat you by verbal affirmation. Um, I see no lights on, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Great job, thank you so much, team. This is a really, really exciting day for us. And that closes now, item three-point-zero-three, and we move on to item three-point-zero-four. Uh, this is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to provide direction to the Superintendent to initiate the temporary closure of Edward L. Pine Middle School in accordance with Administrative Regulation seven-zero-eight-seven at the beginning of the two-thousand-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year for the purposes of reconstructing a pre-K facility at that location. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us still our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Searsley.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, this in some ways, shapes, and forms has already been discussed. Uh, the agenda title itself and the conversation, but honestly, I, I, I did request this be put on the board agenda and be agendized for possible action, uh, for the, for the very, very important purpose of ensuring that we walk out of here and that our community leaves this conversation having the appropriate degree of clarity on where we're going forward. So, um, I, I'll stop talking, I'd be happy to discuss some nuance in state law and Admin Reg eighty-seven, seventy-eight-seven, but, uh, I think the, the agenda title speaks for itself, thank you.
Um, Trustee Hall?
Oh, I didn't mean to.
Oh. Um, so I, and, and I appreciate, I actually appreciate the team breaking these into two because it creates a deliberate action for the community to understand, because as we just talked about in the previous item, uh, Pine Middle School, the site would be temporarily closed because we potentially, with this motion, would be building a new pre-K five, uh, school on it, um, to include Smith Ridge and likely others. So I actually appreciate that the team, uh, broke this up the way that it did. Um, I have another thought, but I'll go to Vice President Mayberry first. Then I, I'll hold that until after, um, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Searsley.
Sorry, it just occurs to me to further highlight that this agenda item is very specific relative to the timeline and the location. However, um, juxtaposed with the previous item, which covered a lot of topics, including conversations at the Trainer Duncan Campus, the specific recommendation is not inclusive of that campus at this time, as, uh, we mentioned in the previous item, that's a few years further into the future. So the clarity and the action here is associated just with, uh, the campus at Pine for the purposes of reconstructing it as a new elementary school, as it says.
Thank you. Um, and, and so actually, I will jump in here, so I asked the first part of my question in the last item, but the part that's more appropriate for this item is that in the previous item, we saw the timeline drafts and we saw the, the design work. Um, it's, it's just a preference, but I would hope that the communities who may attend this pre-K five, those decisions could start earlier in the process, because what I was kind of getting at, now that we're in this agenda item, it, it, it feels important to me, and particularly how we have, as a district, have been so careful to bring in everyone's voices, that all the communities that could be attending this school have a voice in the design of it. So that way, their voice is part of what is designed and created, rather than after the fact, because it's, it's fairly known that the Smith Ridge community knows they're going to be a part of this new school, but it is so important to make sure that all the communities, so that's just a recommendation that I have, so that a community doesn't feel like they've just been zoned into this school, but rather they have been a part of creating what it has, what it offers, and they were considered from the beginning. So that's, um, that's the second part of kind of what I was getting to. It's not really a question, it's just a suggestion, but it's the second part of what I was asking before.
It's a wonderful point, it's a super important point, as we do any type of enrollment boundary adjustments, and I, I know that there's opportunities that we're going to be able to find in the very near future to, uh, lean into that opportunity.
Um, I would, I would just like to add as, as kind of a, an, a thought is that because we are potentially pulling multiple schools together through this FMP process, that this school and any other schools that we wind up moving together, that, that we also consider, um, involving the na- the school naming committee, because when you, you say, oh, this one's just gonna, that we're like, we're just gonna keep this name, and then you bring in other schools, they don't always feel, they feel like they're that add-on. And I think, to your point, if they, if we want them to be a part of the process, it's almost like we have to start from scratch, if that's possible. So I would just suggest that maybe we also consider the naming committee being a part of this process as well. Um, and then, again, just keep up with the communication with the community, you guys are doing a great job, so keep up with that.
And just a clarifying question, I'm assuming the, the school building is going to model some of our newer elementary schools that we've seen, is, is that correct?
You know, at Pine, we believe there's a unique opportunity to repurpose portions of that footprint. Um, it's going to be a part of the design process. You saw in that ilus- illustration, uh, a new building. At the end of the day, this is going to be a new elementary school that is equivalent, uh, from a facility standpoint with our newest buildings. If it looks different from the outside than, uh, say for example, Jaywood Raw, on the inside, it will have all the same pieces and parts, and most notably, it will look nothing like, uh, the current building on that campus.
Fair enough, yeah, that's, thank you for that clarifying, uh, clarification. Uh, Madam President, I'll go ahead and move the Board of Trustees.
Oh, oh, we have to do public comment, but you can definitely do that after. Um, I'll, I'll definitely give you that. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Nava Duran.
Hello, uh, hello, my name is Pablo Nava Duran, and, um, and I want to talk about Pine Middle School, because this is, that Mills, that, that school I went to for middle school, when I was in middle school, I went to Pine Middle School, the only one middle school, I'd never been to middle school, other middle school than Pine, so it kind like, this is, well, it's sad for me, Pine, Pine alumni who, any, any alumni who've been to Pine for last, for last forty-eight years, which is nineteen-seventy-six, when it opened started, so, this is a, um, beginning, this is a end of a era for Pine Middle School as well. Well, I feel like this is sad, but I will support the motion because of many, the school district have been declining, and we want, we want, we want to have a new opportunity for that community, and that community deserve a new school. Well, depending on they're going to new Vaughn, the Poly, or Hurst, it's all new schools, so depending on the zoning advisor community, on, um, Seaslee, so, fair sad, see, Pines will no longer exist, but I will support a, a motion, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nava Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
All right, before I go over to Vice President Mayberry, um, I, I want to plus-one that, Pablo, thank you so much for saying that. When this community contemplated WC one back in two-thousand-sixteen, um, of course, we were looking at our high-growth areas where we were building new homes and we had overcrowding, and, and that is, of course, a big focus of what it is that we did with that whole first phase of WC one. But the true promise of the commitment that we have made, with promises made and promises kept, is to invest in our established communities, and particularly those that are underprivileged, um, and to ensure that these children are going to school in an environment that reflects the value they bring to our community. Because children across Washoe County, from the rural areas to more of the urban dense areas, deserve to be going to school in an environment that reflects a modern, engaging environment in education. And as I have often said, where you go to school is almost as important as what you learn in those schools, and again, children should be in places that reflect the promise that they bring to our community, and that is exactly what we are doing by investing in this Neal Road neighborhood, um, and investing all of our WC one secondary phase work, um, particularly in established neighborhoods. So I'm really excited, as the trustee for this area, to see this happen. And on that note, I will turn it over to Vice President Mayberry.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move the Board of Trustees, direct the Superintendent to initiate a temporary closure of Edward L. Pine Middle School in accordance with Administrative Regulation seven-zero-eight-seven, the beginning of the two-thousand-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, with the anticipation that it reopen as a pre-K through five facility at the beginning of the two-thousand-twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year.
And I will, uh, second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, we have a second by Trustee Phoenix. Light on for discussion on the motion, oh, that's okay.
I'm ready to vote.
Well, and just so you know, um, so now, like, so for example, I took the opportunity to say what I did before we made the motion, but sometimes somebody will jump in and make the motion, and during this time, if you had something to say or something that was important to you, it's completely fine. Sometimes we even make amendments on motions, because someone's like, hey, this, that, and that's okay to do during this time, too. Um, so with that said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero, thank you so much, team. And that closes item three-point-zero-four. Uh, before we move on to our last two items in this section, we will go ahead and take approximately a ten-minute break, so I will call a recess until approximately four-oh-five PM. Thank you. until approximately 4:05 PM. Thank you.
All right, it is four ten P M and I'd like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. And prior to this recess, we just closed item three point zero four. And now we are preparing to open item three point zero five. This is the presentation and discussion on the Gwynne Center Report Examining School Funding in Nevada. Equity in Education and Policy Considerations, which offers an in-depth analysis of Nevada's new pupil-centered funding plan. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And presenting with us today, of course, we have our superintendent, Jo Ernst. And we also welcome up Jill Tolles, Executive Director of the Gwynne Center, and Dr. Anna Colquitt, also from the Gwynne Center. And Jill, I hope you don't mind, because I know Anna will not do this, but she is one of the most impressive new partners that I have met in a very long time, and so I know she'll be doing most of the talking today. And I do hope this community has amazing opportunity to meet her and the talent that she brings.
I couldn't agree more, Madam President, Vice President, and Superintendent, and our esteemed Board of Trustees. I'm Jill, for the record, Executive Director of the Kenny Gwynne Center for Policy Priorities. And my chief responsibility today is to also brag on Dr. Anna Colquitt and to introduce her. So for those of you who don't know us, we are statewide, independent, nonpartisan policy research center. And one of the areas that we study is education policy. We have six reports we produced over this biennium ahead of the legislative session. One of which garnered a lot of interest, particularly from this body, on examining school funding in Nevada, taking a look at the pupil-centered funding plan. And here to present is Dr. Anna Colquitt Esquire. She has bookends on her name. She is both a doctor and a lawyer, Ph.D. in Educational Psychology and a lawyer from Boyd Law School. So with that, I would like to introduce Anna, who can tell you about all the great work that she and her team have done over the interim, including on this study.
Welcome, Anna. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. There's a lot that I could talk about, but I'm going to try to condense it and give you what I hope is the most helpful and pertinent information. But before I do that, I want to start by just showing this is our education team. So of course, we have our Gwynne Center team led by Jill Tolles. But this is our education policy research team. And I especially want to know Dr. Jennifer McLendon and Koshifa and Todd, who were all key researchers on this project. And then our GIS specialist, Robin Evans, who was also instrumental for this research. And so as she'll mention, we produced six reports and briefs in the past interim. Today, I'm going to be talking about our school funding report. But I just want to note that all of these reports are available on our website, gwynnescenter.org. And I'd be happy to chat individually about any of them if they're of interest. So let's get into school funding. This report was commissioned by the Department of Ed. And it was an eighteen-month study on how the PCFP played out in Nevada. So I'd like to start this conversation just by explaining the very basics of how school funding works through the PCFP in Nevada. Every student receives the base funding amount, which is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. I like to just say nine thousand dollars for simplicity. And then if they qualify for a weighted category, they receive the highest of the weights that they qualify for. So how this plays out is if a student is an English learner, and they are also a gifted and talented education student, they would receive additional weighted funding for the English learner qualification. So they would receive that, what is now four thousand dollars-ish, for their English learner qualification. This is important to note that it is only for the highest of the weighted categories, because for that student, that is an EL student, but is also a Gate student. They only receive the EL funding. However, schools are still providing the services for the Gate program as well. And so how this plays out is that schools are providing for the students that qualify for more than one category, but are only funded for the highest of the weights. I also want to know two things here. First, our at-risk calculations for this entire report were for the prior definition. The definition of at-risk of not graduating just changed. It was through our research, we used the free and reduced lunch definition. However, that is now changed to a grad score, which is calculated using seventy-five factors based on this infinite campus model. And that data was not available when we did our research. So we're hoping to update that based on the new information that we will receive shortly. But for now, the at-risk data was under the prior definition. I also want to note that we included special education in our analysis. Although it is not a weighted category, it is cost-based versus a set amount based on qualification. We include it in the analysis because if a student qualifies for special education services, they are exempt from qualifying for any of the other weighted funding categories. So we thought that it was important to include it along with the other weighted categories.
And Dr. Colquitt, can we go back to that slide? This is something that we're going to explore a little more in the next agenda item. But just so that we can orient ourselves as Dr. Colquitt walks through this, how this affects Washoe County. Our district has thousands of students, thousands, that fall into more than one of these four categories. And approximately the budgetary impact to our general fund to provide these necessary services is over twenty million dollars. So just something for the community to know. We'll talk more about it in the next legislative item. But as we look at this slide, so that there is clarity about how this practice impacts our community and our education system.
Yes, thank you for that clarification and making it personal and hit home, because our analysis was statewide. We did zoom in on particular counties and then schools as well to get kind of that more personal view. But I also wanted to note something about the at-risk distinction. And that is that when we see the amount of students that receive at-risk funding, that number has decreased by about two hundred thousand students statewide. So the amount that each individual student receives has increased significantly. But the number of students that receive that funding has decreased significantly. So those numbers are a little bit different now than they are in what we're seeing through our research. So this provides kind of a district view of how this funding plays out. And again, note that at-risk funding is a little bit different now, now that two hundred thousand less students are receiving that funding. But what I want to note here is just a couple of takeaways from our research. One is with Gate funding. You'll see here that a lot of our rural districts do not seem to receive Gate funding, and that is accurate. What happens in a lot of rurals is that state-accredited Gate funding programs require a lot of administrative support that our rural districts do not have. So therefore, they have Gate programs that they have at their schools and within their districts. But they are not state-accredited and therefore do not receive the Gate funding per student that our other districts may receive. So that's kind of one piece that we learned through having administrative interviews, was that those programs do exist, but the funding does not follow it due to that administrative burden. Also, just want to note here that there was significant missing data across the board, especially in our rurals and especially in our charters. And so that's something that came up again and again, is how can we strengthen the data that we have so that we are able to do these analyses and understand the full picture more clearly. For the at-risk, I've talked about it a little bit, but I want to note a few things that came up again and again in our research. And that is, without clarity, I mentioned that there are seventy-five factors that are utilized to determine this grad score. Without clarity on what those factors are and how they are utilized, we heard from principals and district administrators that it is incredibly challenging, from an accountability standpoint, to link the targeted interventions to the needs of the population. So the calculation and the metrics that are utilized to determine whether a student is at risk of not graduating are not known to those that are making the decisions in the district and/or principals in some districts. And so therefore, because they don't know what the needs are that are triggering that at-risk designation, it's near impossible to link that or to target an intervention that would be connected to what triggered the at-risk designation. And so I think this is important to note, because we heard it again and again, that not only did they not know what what factors were being considered, but when they learn that some factors were being considered, heard like number of times that a student goes to the nurse and has a nurse visit. Some schools reported that they don't even use infinite campus to keep track of that metric, and they have a different system to do so. And so therefore, the accuracy of the at-risk calculation was really difficult for principals to rely on, because they did not know what metrics were being used. With the at-risk category, I do want to note that our research found a very high correlation between at-risk designation and chronic absenteeism. This is not surprising. If a student is at risk of not graduating, they are likely chronically absent. But I think that this is really important, because when we talk about how to spend those at-risk dollars, a lot of principals and district administrators were asking for clarity on how those dollars should be spent. And the thought of having that link there and knowing that that is an opportunity to spend at-risk dollars to target chronically absent students seems like an obvious kind of path and an idea for them. Overall, these numbers are not surprising. This is percent of student enrollment. But I just want to note again that this gray bar, the large bar on all of them, is students with standard funding. And then you have the weighted on the left-hand side. So what we learned in our research is that although the PCFP has made huge strides, school funding is still not adequate. We know this across the board, across the state, school funding is not enough. And especially when we look at those weighted categories and how they are playing out at the school level, it is not enough. When students are only receiving the funds from the highest category that they are eligible for, it requires schools to still provide those services and therefore spend funds that are not provided to them for that spending. Ensuring that the funds are distributed in an equitable way remains a challenge. This is particular in districts where there is differing autonomy between who is making the decisions and where the funding is received. So for example, Clark County, that principals are responsible for their budgets and making the budgetary decisions. In every other district in our state, those decisions are made at the district level. And so ensuring that there are dynamic channels for communication where decisions are being made based on the needs at the very local level is important. We hear a lot, you know, when we're talking about the PCFP, of the money following the student. And the only way that that is possible is if that communication is happening on a constant basis. And what we learned across the board is that the money following the student is nearly impossible or is impossible. And so really thinking about how we can still ensure that there is an equitable distribution of funds while maintaining those channels of communication. Overall, just a finding was this lack of guidance for how funds should be spent, particularly in the at-risk category. But just overall, with differing levels of autonomy, of budgetary control, thinking about who's making the decisions for spending and how are those decisions to be made? And where are the levels of autonomy with what decisions can be made in terms of spending? And then finally, really thinking about post-pandemic and the intensified needs. This came up in every single interview that we conducted with both school administrators and district administrators, and that schools are having a really difficult time, from a funding perspective, providing the services and supports that students need post-pandemic. And when we think about especially that multiple-category student that requires multiple supports, but it's not funded for multiple supports, it puts a major strain on schools and the districts in order to provide for the needs of the students. So policy considerations that came out of this research, overall, standardizing the way that we are collecting and accessing or being able to access data is key. We had a very difficult time accessing the data that we need. We do believe that the new three eighty-seven reports will help with this. However, standardizing that in a way where we could conduct longitudinal studies on how the PCFP is actually playing out is critical, not just from a district perspective, but from a state accountability perspective, to know how these funds are playing out at the school level. And with that is transparency and consistency in how the funds are being spent and distributed across the state. And then really thinking about accountability and linking how we are funding our schools to the metrics that we are using to assess performance, and potentially reassessing what those performance metrics are in order to align with what we have valued in our funding distribution. I want to note that a huge piece of this research is our GIS tool. I know this slide is so overwhelming, so don't get into the nitty-gritty of it. The reason that I have it up here is to show you, we have these school profiles for all of the schools that were within our study at the end of our report. We have also produced these profiles for every elementary school in the state. And along with that, we have an interactive GIS tool that's available as a component of this research that shows what are the federal funds, what are the state funds for each school? How does this look from a district perspective? And then what are those community factors as well that impact the students that are attending these schools? And so I put this up here to show kind of a glimpse of what the GIS component looks like. These are school profiles. There's also a full GIS tool that is very interactive and a great visual for what this funding looks like at the school level. So that is a very quick overview of our school funding report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have my email up here, and I would be happy to have any follow-up conversations or go through the report in a little bit more detail. Things like performance, I did not even touch on here, but our report gets into that. So I'd be happy to talk about any aspects of school funding in greater depth, if that's desired. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Colquitt. When I saw that this report was released, I was reading it, and I've never seen anything done so well around public education in Nevada. And particularly because we are awash in opinion. There are a lot of subjective thoughts. People know somebody, they used to be an educator, they came from a different state, they heard from a neighbor. Everybody has a lot of thoughts. Nowhere had I actually seen objective research that painted a picture that we could have a baseline of a conversation. Absolutely may have differences of opinion, different subjective preferences. But we finally have a baseline of objective data, and that is a starting point for progress. So thank you so much for this. Question is, so we saw what the average per people amount was for Nevada. Jill or Anna, do either of you know an approximate of what the national average is?
Yes. National average is about seventeen thousand. How, oh, I'm seeing myself twice. I apologize. That freaked me out a little bit. National average is about seventeen thousand, and the APA expert recommendation for adequate school funding, which is not dream school funding, that is adequate school funding, is just above that, at about seventeen thousand five hundred.
And the national, not national, but the Nevada average is just around nine thousand dollars.
It's actually around thirteen thousand, because nine thousand is the base. But then when we consider the Nevada average, it's about thirteen thousand.
Perfect. And is that with like the weighted categories for some students? Yeah, but the base per people amount is around nine thousand, give or take.
Yes, that's correct. But because school funding happens in different ways in other states, when we compare our average to other states' average, we use a thirteen thousand-ish number to make that comparison.
Thank you so much. And I have another question, but I will go to trustee Nicolette first.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Anna. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
And I congratulate the Gwynne Center for continuing, this is not new to this organization, for continuing to deep-dive very important topics. You mentioned something that really caught my attention about how we don't really have the ability to follow the money with each student. Do you have suggestions for the state to be able to improve that so we can, depending on the student and the demographics, be able to follow that?
Great question. I think, well, I will start with something I already mentioned. And I think a key piece here are the communication channels, especially in districts outside of CCSD, where all of these financial decisions are being made on the district level. They're not seeing student by student and what that actually looks like on the school level for every single school in their district, right? So the decisions are being made at a higher level, and ensuring that there are open communication channels that target the needs at the ground level is key. I think also when we talk about the eligibility and the multiple weights and students only receiving the highest of the weights that they are eligible for, money can't follow the student when we have to pull Gate funds, because this student is EL and Gate, right? We have to pull Gate funds for somewhere to be able to provide that service to the student. So money can't follow the student if we're having to share resources, pull from other categories, which we heard happens a lot, or pull from our general fund in order to be able to provide these resources. So that's kind of an easy way for the money to be able to better follow the student. But I would challenge us to ask our school principals, our district administrators, that question of how can we do that better? I will say, outside of CCSD, most of the principals that we interviewed did not know what the people-centered funding plan was. They did not know what a weighted category was. They did not know what students, you know, how the funding actually trickled down to the student level or to even the school level. And I would say that it's really difficult to have those conversations about what a student needs if our principals aren't aware of how they are funded to begin with. And so I think that's a place to start, is ensuring that that communication is happening and that professional development is happening too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask my follow-up now, and then I'll go to Clerk Woodley. So I think that this is fantastic information. Can you explain or share what the Gwynne Center has been doing to share this knowledge with our legislators and our state-level leaders? The kind of traction you're getting, obviously don't want to make any promises. But could you share how this knowledge is being shared with the people about to make decisions for us in this upcoming legislative session?
Certainly, and I can step in, Jill Tolles, for the record. And so we have conducted forums in the north and the south, invited legislators who attended. And we also have presentations lined up before the Assembly Education Committee, before all four caucuses. We're also giving them copies each of these reports, not only the summary of all six reports that we did over the biennium, but specifically the copies of the actual report itself on the pupil-centered funding, not only to our education committees, but also to our finance and Ways and Means committees as well. And then every legislator will have a copy of our Nevada briefing book, which also highlights the key findings of this. And then Anna mentioned that we went ahead and And then Anna mentioned that we went ahead and used the last little bit of our contract to fund a card for every elementary school district or every elementary school in the state, and we will give those handouts to each legislator so that they can look up. And you can see this online as well, so there are digital versions through our story mapping and the GIS tool, but to actually hand one to every legislator to say, oh, these are the schools in my district. And we've divided it out by Senate and Assembly District, and then they can see for themselves the differences between each school within their district to help illustrate that point.
And this is perhaps a good time to also point out, for those watching or with us today that may not know, that Ms. Toll's is also a former Assemblywoman. So you would know these waters very, very well, being a three-time Assemblywoman.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to add on to that, Ms. Toll's actually shared her mic with me once at a Marijuana Task Force meeting, so I appreciate that. This report is elaborate. Thank you so much. And I know, Dr. Colquitt, you said the infographic looked pretty busy, but thank you for the infographic because when I first started reading the report, I didn't have a lot of time. So I was trying to bruise, you know, peruse really quickly, but then when I saw the infographics, that really caught me. I said, okay, I'm going to go back and read more when I have more time. So thank you. And that GIS tool is amazing. That, yeah, that was really, really good. Thank you so much. This is great. Thank you.
I'm so happy to hear that. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights on. Oh, Superintendent Ernst.
Yeah, I would be remiss not to say thank you to Executive Director Toll's and Dr. Colquitt. Your work to support and create larger understanding around the funding mechanisms in Nevada is really critical to the efforts towards continually improving education. And appreciate the objective way in which you go about gathering the research and sharing that research and just on behalf of Washoe County School District and all of us educators out here, we want to thank you for the efforts that you're putting forth.
We are so grateful. Thank you so much, Dr. Colquitt and Executive Director Toll's. And if I'm not mistaken, this might be the first public body that you've presented in front of, at least in northern Nevada, in a public meeting like this. And so hopefully everyone has the opportunity to watch this from home or to re-watch the recording because this is valuable information so that we can have a shared understanding of the facts around public education, funding and results in Nevada. So thank you so much. All right, that closes item 3.05 and now brings us to our final item in section three, item 3.06, the presentation and discussion on the priorities of the Washoe County School District for the 2025 Nevada Legislative Session, based on the approved legislative platform to include such items as prefiled bills that could impact the district in Governor Lombardo's State of the State address related to educational matters. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we have with us principal at Pinion Public Affairs, Dylan Shaver, and then also Superintendent Ernst will be joining in the conversation. Welcome, Dylan.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today for your records and for your new trustees. Congratulations. I'm Dylan Shaver with Pinion Public Affairs. The district contracts with me and my firm to handle some external relations and legislative issues for the district. We look forward to working with you. I am here today with the daunting task of predicting the future, which I have never successfully been able to do, but wanted to give the trustees a sense of where we believe the next session of Nevada Legislature will head. We are going to do a little bit of refresher on where things ended up with the platform. We're going to weave that together with the great information that Jill Toll's and Dr. Colquitt presented to you. We'll talk a little bit about process and sort of how the 120 days, starting February 3rd, is really going to go for WCSD and for everybody else. So jumping right in, you may recall seeing me over and over and over again as we finalized your legislative platform. I think we landed in a good place that connects your vision to the on-the-ground execution of the work you are doing. You drafted a platform that does a number of things, but the important part of this, you know, we try and produce for you a nice polished product and all of that, but this document is the guidance that staff and that my team at Pinion will take as we see new bills pop up, will help us prioritize them and understand their effect on the district without having to come here essentially daily to get your feedback on any number of the hundreds of bills that will be introduced. Your platform lined out four key priorities, supporting the local community, and that includes two things. One, ensuring that the local education system remains local as well as supporting the needs in this community that may surround WCSD's work, whether that's RAP services, whether that's fully funding lunches or what have you. It also involves empowering our personnel to make sure that they can make the decisions that are right for their classroom and their students while we at the same time create space for the students themselves to thrive in the system that we have created for them. And of course, that necessitates advocating for smart strategic funding. And we laid that out, and this honestly did not come to me until the very end of our platform conversations, that that actually makes a kind of a sentence that answers the question, what are we doing at the state legislature? Well, we're there to support our local community and empower our personnel while we create space for students to thrive and by necessity advocate for smart strategic funding. I honestly wish that I were bright enough to have put that together at the front end, but I'm thankful that I got there at all. In addition to the broad planks of your platform, you added a couple of special topics for consideration. One, I think this will be the third or fourth time that the idea of reclaiming instructional time for our teachers and administrators and ensuring the limited time, I tell my own team this, there's 168 hours in a week and the only thing you can do is pick how to spend that time. And we want to make sure that we're spending that limited time that we have with students engaged and working on these projects, doing the work that really matters rather than filing duplicative reports or engaging in compliance activities. The next special topic and the focus of your legislation that you chose to introduce is ensuring excellence in every hire, clearing as many barriers as we can to ensure that somebody who wants to be in our classroom and is ready to be in our classrooms and is qualified to be in our classrooms isn't waiting around for a six-week background check or anything like that stops them from getting to work. And then the third and final sort of special topic you talked about was finding a level of parity between district schools and charter schools. And there's been a lot of political haymate of this. I'm just going to say into the record that the way we understood your intent was that, you know, if we go back to the initial laws in this state in chapter 388A that allowed for charters to expand, it was very clear that the intent of that was to allow for a fluid system where public schools could take learnings away from things charter schools were doing. And so it seemed clear that the question becomes, if there is something a charter school can do that is good for kids, why are we stopping a more traditional school from being able to do that same thing? And that's sort of how we read that and how we've been communicating that out to the world. At the same time as you were working through the platform, of course, we just heard from the great folks at the Gwin Center about their work. And I obviously don't need to delve too deeply into that, except to say that upon review, there is a lot of overlap between WCSD's platform and the recommendations made in the Gwin Center report. Now, I think that they were very careful to say, they are presenting the results of research and the conclusions that comes to that. They are not an advocacy organization in the traditional sense, but we now have a platform that aligns with a lot of these things that are now independently verified by outside parties. And we just did a quick sampling of some of the high points in there and tied them to the recommendations within the Gwin Center report. You know, certainly transparency and allocation comes to the forefront of my mind, and we will talk about that in a little bit. Empowering our personnel, well, they talk about mentorship and support programs. They talk about incentive programs for folks who are doing the best work. Space to, create space for students to thrive. Well, there they are, talking about additional funding for social emotional learning, early childhood development, mental health services, as well as increased funding to ensure that these resources are spent equitably. Finally, my personal favorite is a longtime government nerd, forgive the language, is under advocate for smart strategic funding, what they charitably refer to as the impact of overlapping policies, which is to say there are a number of areas where there are layered requirements for certain types of tests or certain types of activities that end up draining both time and money from the organization in a way that is of no benefit to students. So it is really excellent to see that kind of validation of your hard work. So now that you've done that, I understand that the question becomes, well, what do we, what do we do from there? So there's a process when new legislation is introduced in Carson City that we have worked with the superintendent and his leadership team to develop. Essentially, a new bill is introduced. My team and I review those bills together and we kind of perform an analysis through both the framework of the platform as well as through a special framework that I call the Mark Mathers Appeasement Act, so I don't get yelled at, and that is, is this going to cost money? And so we look at it through those, is he mad? He's behind me.
That has a great ring to it. Ma. The Mark Mathers Appeasement Act. Ma.
And, you know, and I, I try and make very clear when we do that and when we communicate to lawmakers, it's not a function of whether or not this idea you have is good or bad. It's a function of this is going to cost $27,000. Is this the highest, best use of those $27,000? And how do we prioritize that when there will be, of course, 100 bills that want every district across the state, not just ours, to, you know, spend money on a handful of pet projects? They might all be great ideas, but the pot's only so big, and if they can't grow it, then there's an opportunity cost every single one of those dollars. And every session, it's a new education process. About a third of the legislature turns over every two years. And, you know, we don't try and beat them over the head with fiscal notes, but we just try and, you know, help contextualize the conversation for them. So my team performed those two reviews. I don't want to.
No, and I was going to say, in terms of cost, in addition to hard cost, do we ever try to capture the human resource value of, that is wonderful that you want 364 new additional reports? That's going to be, so I'm, my question is, is when we quantify the impact, is it only on hard fiscal spend or are we ever able to show them the human resource implications of what it is they're asking for?
So, yes, we do. There's not a formal process for that, but last session, we began sort of viewing bills through that very specific lens. In this interim, we actually tried to compile a tick-tock of a teacher or administrator's day, and we can sort of see where those things get gobbled up and where the time comes in. You know, I said this at the time when the legislature was doing breakfast after the bell, the bell, similar situation. Nobody says it's a bad idea. Kids, of course, need to eat. If you have a five minutes of every day for the course of 180 instructional days, you have taken three entire school days out of it to do it. And it's not a thing, we're saying this is a bad idea. It's a thing to say, we have to have an eyes-wide-open sense of what these policies are doing. We want to lean pretty heavily on that going into '25 to get through the session, and I'd love if there was a way, frankly, this is just Dylan talking, to quantify that in the same process where we're doing fiscal notes on bills as well, but, well, I'll just continue on. So once, once the Pinion teams reviewed a bill, we farm it out to the various members of the superintendent's team to review with a handful of notes and questions and things like that. They provide their feedback, sometimes with not as much notice as we would love to give, and so thank you to everybody who's on these projects in advance. We collect all that feedback. We propose a course of action to the superintendent and the ELT. We get a decision based on that, and then we go off with our sword and shield and do the best we can with it. A lot of these bills run into each other. Just today, and I don't want you all to think that this was a scientific analysis by any means, but we just did a quick rundown of the bills that have been requested so far that we know about. Eighty-seven invoke education, 73 school districts, 24 teachers, 12 collective bargaining. That's before we get to building the buildings and keeping the lights on, and this is with only about a real knowledge of what half the bills are doing right now. And so last session, we ended up tracking just over 400 bills for the school district. A lot of them didn't do anything. Most of them don't pass, but we, we don't know that going in. And so, you know, there's a lot of work that goes in just now to make sure that we know where we are. And of course, of course, there's a lot of bills on that. I pulled the data here from the Pew Research Center, and if you look at state-level issues, and this is just importance of issues among registered voters in the United States, got the economy, for the most part, not a state thing, democracy generally, not a state thing, terrorism and national security, obviously another federal thing, type Supreme Court is another federal thing, immigration, another federal thing. The first domestic to the state issue that pops up on that list is education. So of course, we're going to see a lot of bills on that. It's important to everybody in this room and everybody outside of it. We see a lot of competing issues, and JJ, my cool little circles don't show up here, but you can see the outline of a Venn diagram here. We've, the point of this slide is to say, there are, of course, a lot of competing issues as it relates to public education. There have been a couple of high-profile rollouts between the state of the state that happened just a couple of weeks ago, as well as the Senate Majority Leader dropping a very significant proposal for education in the state. And I want to focus on where the overlap is. Both proposals through different mechanisms extend sort of the SB 231 funding, the raises that came through at the end of the last legislative session. They both have their own ways to do it, and I'll flag what that might mean later in the presentation. Both want to expand funding for pre-K now to different degrees and in different measures. Both want to eliminate extraneous reporting. Both want to expand accountability in some way, shape or form, and they have their own ideas of where to do it. But insofar as three of these four things pop up in your, in your platform, there's a lot of good news. They're going to disagree. Our job is to take sort of their own priorities and make sure that we are checking boxes on our side as they sort of wrestle in Carson City. They, of course, were not in unanimous agreement, and of course, this is the starting point for both sides. No two bills, even if folks are on the same side of the aisle, you're going to get 100% overlap, and there will be a lot more bills introduced in this topic area. But as the heat gets turned up and the coverage of these things expands, I just wanted to contextualize for you kind of what we're looking at, what trends we are seeing in that. There is, of course, a conversation about money to be had coming out of the 2023 legislature. We hear the reference to this historic investment that the legislature made. That was done by formula, and I do think that they should be applauded for sticking to the formula rather than diverting the resources. for sticking to the formula rather than diverting the resources to, to other things. That takes a certain amount of political will. But it's important that we not let up on the fact that that was ketchup money. That was, uh, and, uh, there, there continue to be conversations about what is that right amount? But here we have a nonpartisan research institute saying that as a whole, it's just not adequately funded. And so to, to have that in our back pocket. The, a lot of these topics, um, have come up. There were good things that happened because of the SB 231 money, because of the PCFP implementation. And you have seen that throughout your other presentations today. You know, whether that's through fewer vacancies or smaller class sizes in critical areas. Uh, I, I think that, that you can feel that difference in just the short period of time. However, as was also mentioned in not one, but two previous presentations today alone, there are, uh, bigger, bigger picture challenges. One of which is of course, the black box model of at-risk funding. My understanding is we're the only state in the Union that takes these 75 mystery factors and puts them into somebody else's computer that just spits out a number. That's neither transparent to the public nor consistent for the districts themselves. The weighted funding. There it is. Okay. So the, the, the weighted funding issue, which we'll just move forward to here, came up previously as well. It's important to know while the state caps, uh, caps us essentially at fully weighting only once for any given student, if a student somehow falls into all four of these categories, we still have a legal requirement to check all four boxes and provide an education in a way that, that respects all four of those designations. And, uh, the President Smith brought up earlier this evening, that does cause us to spend about 20 million extra dollars to make sure those students who fall into other categories, uh, get the resources they need. We had this conversation going into the 2023 session, um, with, with some folks who were helping Governor Lombardo, uh, and brought this very topic up. And they said, well, that just means putting more money into the schools, was the response we got. And, and, and I said, yes. You are correct. And those are general fund expenses that, that, that could go any number of places. Uh, I was late in getting this PowerPoint in. Because you may have read in the newspapers, there have been some challenges with the executive budget. And we put off as late as possible, uh, because we want to give you the most up-to-date information when we present to you here. And, uh, so, so just, I will lead with, we do not know as of right now the amount of money that the governor's proposal would bring into this school district. And that is because, best I can tell, nobody knows that right now. If you saw the Department of Education's presentation before the Interim Finance Committee, at the end of last week, uh, they say that they intend to weight the regional cost adjustments, uh, equally across the 17 districts, but we have not seen that on paper anywhere. They say that, uh, per pupil funding will go up and not down as the budget indicates, but we have yet to see that. Uh, I am not saying that it is not true. I'm saying that, uh, we cannot build a budget off of sort of rumor and like what somebody said in a meeting or what have you. Much to everyone's, uh, I believe including NDE's own frustration. Nobody wants us not to be able to do this. But it's, uh, unclear at this time what that is going to look like. Once those numbers are in, your team will do what they do best and, and break them down and make everybody very smart about their implications, uh, right away. But in, as I sit here right now, I do not know what that looks like and I am sorry for that. So what is WCSD's role in this process? What role do we play at the legislature and politically generally? And I wanted to take a quote from your own strategic plan in, in saying that. And, and that is, your role is to know every student by name, strength and need, so they graduate prepared for the future they choose. You, we are grateful to be able to work with you, uh, on this project. But, uh, part of the way we view our work for the Washoe County School District is that we allow you and your team to focus on that mission. The legislative session will start and end, and for most people, the world keeps turning. I'm not saying the things that happen there aren't important. Obviously, they've, they're very important. But we want WCSD to be able to focus on its mission, confident that you're well represented in Carson City, uh, and minimizing the amount of time the superintendent and his team have to pay attention to what is essentially an uncontrollable externality. My secret strategy to a successful session, uh, I'll tell you that I've been giving this advice out for a long time and nobody has ever listened to me, so don't, uh, yeah, well, you can. Our, our secret strategy to a successful legislative session is remember that we are there as their partner. There are 63 part-time elected legislators who have a staff that's doing a million different things. Our job in that building and out is just to provide perspective and resources that they would not otherwise be able to get. We want to remain focused. And, and this is where I say, we avoid the trap of other people's politics and other people's priorities. You have a strategic plan that says what this organization wants to do. You have a platform that says what we need out of the legislative session. Focus on that. There will be a thousand politicians who want your opinion or you to weigh in on X, Y, and Z. And as individual actors in this community, by all means, like, like do what you need to. But, uh, for WCSD, our advice is always focus on what we're doing here and let's get that thing done. And then of course, stay patient. If you think not knowing the PCFP allocation to the district right now, um, is, is hard when we still don't know on the 119th day of the legislative session, all I can say is, this is how this goes. And we've been doing it for a lot of years. That said, a number of you do occasionally call me with questions about what's happening down there. Please continue to do so. I'll give the same caveat. Anytime we interact that outside of a social setting, I, I, I do tell the superintendent, just to make sure he knows what I'm doing. And of course, I cannot take direction from anybody but one person in this room. But if you've got a question or anything like that, it's easiest for us to give you the same access that, that the leadership team has. Just call and ask it and we'll get it answered. That's my attempt to look into the future, uh, for the next 120 days. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to give you your time back if you'd like it.
Can you really give us the time back? That would be magic.
I'm working on it.
I'm glad you're smiling. So thank you for this and I, I appreciate this update. I've been wondering about this for a while and I, I know I had to be patient and I was. And I don't know if I'm patient anymore because I'm going to ask a question and I really look at, at the superintendent, superintendent because as you said, you will take direction from the superintendent. I think it could, no, it would be extremely helpful to provide us with a regular bill tracker update. Something that we as trustees can simply look at and then go into Nellis on our own to see what's going on. Because you have the connectivity between our strategic plan, the discussions that you have with the superintendent, with our platform, with our planks, everything that goes into that. I'm not asking that we have a tracker that includes all bills, heaven forbid. But I do believe that you and your team have the wisdom, ability and experience to be able to identify bills that you would like us to be informed about.
Thank you, Trustee Nicolet. Appreciate that type of input and the desire for our trustees to stay informed as we're moving forward. I think we can talk as a staff a bit more about perhaps mechanisms of which we may be able to do that, that are effective and efficient given staff time on, on so many different levels. But definitely something that we can kind of come back to, uh, knowing that there's an appetite for, uh, to stay informed throughout the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, you know, I'll just piggyback briefly on what Trustee Nicolet said. Yeah, to the extent possible, it, I think it would be helpful to, to have some minimal pulse as an observer, as, as an elected member of this body on, on what's happening down there. I, I would appreciate that too. But I know things change and things move very, very fast. And I was going to ask you, Mr. Shaver, and then I, I think I answered my own question as, as I was, uh, as I was listening. But just as a refresher and then a follow-up question, the, the education budget has to be approved before any other state budget, correct? Is that still, uh, the, the, the protocol?
That is correct. The Constitution of the State of Nevada requires that, uh, before the legislature passes its general fund or any other budget, they must pass the education budget.
What, just taking education aside for a moment, what are some of the hot button issues that you're hearing? They won't necessarily hijack education since education has to, is, is a priority. But I'm curious from your perspective, what, what are some of the, uh, the, the high level, just at a high level topics, uh, that, that you're hearing that, that this session may, may evolve around?
There are a number of different competing measures that have been absorbing a, a lot of oxygen. One of which is a pretty massive tax incentive package for film production in this state that is backed by, uh, I believe it's Sony Entertainment and the Howard Hughes Corporation in Southern Nevada. That, that would be a sort of multi-billion dollar, uh, package on the level of, I think, what happened in the Sandoval administration with Tesla and the Gigafactory out there. That has been absorbing a lot of time and attention. Frankly, where we are right now, uh, the, the, the struggling over the budget right now has absorbed a lot of, uh, a lot of attention that was otherwise going to other things.
Okay.
It's created, I think, a little bit of a tense situation between the legislative and executive branches. Guess what? That's the system we set up. There is always going to be attention there, no matter who is, uh, uh, who the personalities are involved. But it has, uh, taken up a, a, a lot of time and energy in just the last couple of weeks in a way where it's really difficult to get legislators to talk about anything else. Mental health and, uh, those sort of related issues, um, will, will dominate. I, I, somebody referred, referred me to this sentence a, a couple of weeks ago, that 23 was education's turn. And while they didn't finish that project by any means, there are, we have to acknowledge there are other competing priorities. You just have to leave your, your front door to see the toll that the mental health infrastructure is taking on, on the state. So that is going to devote, uh, uh, take up a lot of time and attention. And this is before, you know, some company comes into the state at the 11th hour to build a stadium or, um, uh, you know, get up the end of the way, a local government can zone things or what have you, uh, which, which, those will come up. We can't predict them.
Thank you for indulging. I appreciate that.
No, of, of course.
Couple of questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Shaver. Because when we talk about education funding, we don't entirely, we have no idea how much of that is actually directed towards true public districts like our own versus other expressions of education in the state. So for me, it's very, it's, it's obviously very nebulous because you can't say we're making an investment in education. But we have no idea of knowing how much of that is actually directed towards true public districts like our own, which is the only public system that takes all children and educates all children with all needs. So I'm very interested when they get that sorted out. My question is for, for our bill, the excellence in every hire. I know it's a crystal ball, but is it being received warmly? Are there any other districts or entities that feel favorably toward it? I know it's ours to carry, but what are the, the initial thoughts? These are of course, not guarantees of where anything will go, but is there interest or support from other entities for it?
Yes. As it relates to Assembly Bill 49, uh, which is the Excellence in Every Hire Act, there has been, uh, interest from both lawmakers, other school districts. I had a very productive conversation with the State Department of Education on this topic. I will say that we, we will likely need some changes between now and when it is heard. But I, I don't think that there's anything that we'll need to do that takes it outside of, of the core of your vision. We also made very clear, the superintendent and I were at the Association of School Superintendents. Well, we're there every month, but I think this was the December meeting. And, uh, opened it up to the other school districts. Listen, this is not a compendium of all good ideas to make hiring easier. So if you have them, let's, let's put them in there. And I made the same offer to the state superintendent and her team as well. If there's challenges on their end that our bill could go towards fixing, uh, that, that would be there. There has been legislative interest. They, I think, understand the, the point. But as with any law, we have to be very careful to, uh, get the language right.
And my last question is also in the crystal ball, no promises. But is there any interest among legislators to fund all the weights or to fund to the mandated ratios? Like, do you hear anything, um, any prefiled bills? Or, um, does there seem to be any interest for all of the work that the Gwynne Center has done and that we've been talking about it? I'm curious if you're hearing any of these things gain traction among those conversations.
I'd like to change the characterization of your question just a little bit because, uh, of course, there's interest. Of course, of course, right? And for the most part, the legislators, particularly the ones that do education policy, they, they know. The challenge is in the state of Nevada's current revenue structure. How do they do it and what will they give up to do it? And I, I would say that there's probably not a, as much interest as there is in, in accomplishing the goal as you have laid it out. As you then say, okay, well, we just aren't going to have Medicaid anymore to do it. Right? That then suddenly the interest drops off. And then, um, again, giving our, given our constitutional structure where anything that increases income to the state requires a two-thirds vote of the legislature and we've got sort of split control. I, I think the governor made his position on new taxes into the state very clear during the state of the state. And so the, the project, I think, becomes, uh, so large that as much as the individual members of the institution know that this is necessary and important, the collective ability of the institution itself may fall short. Which isn't to say, again, of course, they, they want this. They, they know it's an issue. I, I want to make that very clear so that nobody takes a couple of words I said and says, look what Dylan said about you. But, uh, the, the way the system is set up, it is very, very difficult for them to get there at this time. Our job is to keep having the conversation. You know, it took several sessions to get to the pupil-centered funding plan. Some of these things take a very, very long time. We are not the only people swinging from, from, uh, this, this chorus. And it, it is my hope that, that every session we are working with you, we can get folks just a little bit further to the line so that when the time comes, we can sort of solve this problem, but it will be a while.
Thank you very much. And we can relate to that too. We have to make very difficult budgetary decisions with incredibly worthy items and initiatives. And not everything will make it into a budget. So I appreciate that calibration. All right. Seeing no other lights on, uh, thank you so much for presenting to us today, Mr. Shaver. We really appreciate it. And thank you for all the work that you're doing on behalf of the school district. And thank you for all the work that you're doing on behalf of the school district and for education across Nevada.
It's my pleasure. I've said to this group before that this is a very meaningful client for us, and it's important work for, for my team and for me personally. Thanks for letting me do it.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Shaver. All right, that closes item 3.06 and Section 3 in its entirety, and we'll move on now to Section 4, beginning with item 4.01, our student representatives' report. Welcome, Annie.
Thank you. For my report today, I'd like to start by mentioning that I have requested a presentation about the funding that goes into our schools' CTE programs, especially with the new Debbie Smith School being built. I find it quite interesting that we're building another CTE school, but I don't personally feel that all of our schools, public schools are having their CTE programs adequately funded. I can speak on behalf of my school, and especially like our auto tech program being cut last year and having minimal resources for construction. So that kind of interested me, so I figured I would ask my facilitators in Student Voice for a presentation from the district, so I'm using my resources in that way, which is kind of new and I haven't done before. So I'm hoping we can get a presentation before the end of the school year on what the funding is and what schools offer what classes, because they're really vital to a lot of students to enjoy school, and that's the purpose of Student Voice, is to make students want to come to school and make it feel like a place where students belong. Also, I will be reaching out to Lander County Superintendent, Superintendent Klein, as he reached out, and they're looking to put a student representative on their board, so I'm excited about that and awaiting his response. But I'm really excited about that and seeing, and seeing the ways I can help with influencing how they implement a student on their board. Also, I did some research on my own, and I was looking into the different committees our district offers, one of them being the Advisory Committee for Student Attendance. And I noticed that they hold meetings at 9:00 a.m., which does not allow for students to come to them unless they don't have like any morning classes. But I really wanted to come to one of those meetings, so I'm thinking about attending one and hearing what they have to talk about, about our attendance without any student representation, because I think it'd be interesting to see what they have to offer versus what we're feeling, because, I mean, it's our attendance. And then, let's see. I think, I think that kind of covers all of it, but just as a reminder, if anyone in the district or on the Board of Trustees needs student connection, I would love to help, and Student Voice would love to help, because that's what we're here for, and I think sometimes that gets a little blurred, about like what we can do, because, you know, we kind of have like a plan. But if you guys ever need anything or to connect to a group of students, Student Voice is here for the district to use and learn more about our opinions. So we love having people come in and presenting to us. And so reaching out to me or Brad Rose or Caprice Young would be great to get connected with that. And I think that is all I have for today.
Thank you so much, Annie, I appreciate hearing all that. I know, good, good, good. Annie is here today, I love it. All right, Dr. Nicolet, why don't you kick us off for item 4.02, our board reports? So Trustee Phoenix, I won't always make you go first.
I was totally ready to go last. Okay, I think I'm ready. Oh, there's so much. So I was a judge this weekend for We the People in Las Vegas, the state competition, got my pin on. It was an absolutely incredible experience. There were eight schools. Reno High School is, is going to national in April. And I wanted to read, I was a judge for Unit 2. The basic question is, how did the framers create the Constitution? This is what, it's like a mock congressional hearing. And so, if you will, the judges are the senators and the legislators. These are the questions. What were the key controversies and challenges faced during the Confederation period under the Articles of Confederation? Discuss how these issues contributed to the eventual call for a new Constitution. Then there's two bullets. In your estimation, have assessments of the Articles of Confederation been overly critical? Explain your answer. Second bullet, if you were to propose revisions to the Articles of Confederation, what specific changes would you suggest to address the issues of the period and ensure the document's long-term success? That was their questions. And there are six units, and every unit has their own questions. I will tell you that these students, I, I want, I want to assure us that our students are learning about government, they're learning about the Constitution, they are learning about how government works. They answered these questions beautifully, and then we can pepper them with questions that they didn't miss a beat. It was absolutely enlightening, and we can be very, very proud of our students, and they can be proud of themselves. I wanted to share with you, coming off our legislative discussion, the Nevada Association for School Boards, I'm their legislative chair, and these are the Nevada Association of School Boards, all 17 school districts in the state of Nevada. These are the legislative priorities. I think you'll hear some alignment with what Washoe County's working on. The priorities for the Nevada Association of School Boards this legislative session are intended to advocate for policies that will give rural school districts the ability to build much-needed schools, reinstate programs that provide meals for students, and keep all students safe. And then there's, there's seven planks to that. So I will tell you that in answer to, to President Smith's query, which is a very important question, is the, the school districts are working together. We each have our own needs, and we're going to kind of fight our own fight, but we do work together, and we do that through our superintendents, too, and thank you for that. I also serve on the Early Childhood Advisory Council as a governor-appointed position, and we, too, have, have a legislative platform, if you will, and this is ours, and right now it's BDR number one, and it's being championed by Assembly Member, Assemblywoman Claire Thomas, and this is how it reads. "To develop an early childhood leadership infrastructure, establish the governor's office for early childhood," meaning prenatal through third grade, "to align policy and fiscal decision-making for the early childhood system across relevant agencies, of which there are numerous." So again, you can see that, you can see that alignment with what, some of the things that we are working on, and, and that really is a beautiful thing, and we need to continue to do that. The photograph up here, I attended the TMCC at Pennington, the Washoe County School District Applied Technology Day. There were six high schools. This is TMCC Professor Santos, and that was his brand-new, like $100,000 machining machine. I'm telling you, these kiddos, and I asked the question, they have the state-of-the-art tools, which they deserve, and, and I'm so proud that we work together with TMCC, Washoe County School District, our CTE programs, we work together to give our students exactly what our Annie was talking about. These are the things that students love to do, and, and it's good stuff. And then finally, ooh, I'm doing pretty good.
Oh, no, it's going up.
I've gone the other way?
Yeah.
Jay-Jay?
Yeah, it's going up.
Uh-oh, a trustee who can't read the clock, whoops.
It's okay. Thank you. Vice President Revere.
Thank you. I had a chance to attend Damati Ranch a couple of weeks ago, spent some time with Darrell Bell, and also toured and looked at the, the new single-point entry that, that we'll be seeing more throughout our high schools. Had a chance to also attend the Hug High Honor Band evening. I'm one of the representatives, I am the representative on the school board for our Debt Management Commission, and I'll be serving during that trustee hall, so congratulations. And we had our, our first meeting of the year last month, or last week, rather, so I attended that on behalf of the district. Was glad to see most of you at the Martin Luther King Dinner. Had a great time at the Technical Science Day at TMCC last week, and of course, all of us, I believe all of us, almost all of us, attended the appreciation event at Sparks Middle School, and what an inspiring, wonderful morning that was. So thanks to all the golden bears at Sparks Middle School. And I want to thank, I want to congratulate Teacher Denise Trakas, she was the teacher at Von Middle School, that's in, that's in District F, District I represent. She won the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, and she'll be heading to Washington, D.C. very soon. So really proud of our educators, particularly Ms. Trakas in this case, and wish her the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So I was out of the country for a week, attending a wedding, so I didn't get to do, actually, she was a former educator. I won't tell her name, because I don't know if she wants it to be shared, but it was wonderful. I did visit Mr. Martindale at the Clayton Middle School. I was actually able to attend his, he has these meetings twice a week. It's a really good meeting with the counselors, admin staff, and the campus monitor to discuss different approaches as it relates to tardiness, absenteeism, and suspensions. It was very informative, I, I learned a lot, and, and just seeing them take the time twice a week to sit, meet, and talk about individuals that need extra attention and to help them, it was beautiful. His mantra, his behavior is manageable, and he believes in transformational instead of transactional. Sometimes we're transactional with our kids, and we need to try to be transformational. So I really appreciated that. I also attended Sparks Middle School and appreciate what they did for us. They treated us very, very well, and we appreciate the honor. I was hosted by Anahi and Kayla, they were two students, they were beautiful young ladies that were talking to us about Sparks Middle School and how much they appreciate the work that we do here at the district as trustees. Sometimes you think that they don't have any idea of what we do, but they are paying attention to what we do, so I appreciate that. Also attended an NIAA meeting, representing us, a big discussion was related to football realignment in the state. That's an ongoing conversation. And then lastly, we did attend a training on the weekend, all board members, and that was a good full day of training, so thank you.
Are you going to do the pictures first, JJ? Oh, not again. It's okay if you can't get them.
I don't know why it doesn't like these.
It doesn't like me. It's okay. I can be very descriptive. I went to Marvin Moss Family Game Night with Principal Kobe Riordan invited me, and it's just, it's wonderful to see all the parents there and doing games. There was a dance party in one of the rooms, and they were doing kind of a, what's that game where you, you have to, you flip things over and match the matching game? But it was a math, it was, it was really cool. It was like have the answers, one card, but the thing you had to match it to is like 2 plus 2 equals 4, and that matched the number four. So that was memory game. That was super cool. It was a lot of, memory game! I'm doing good. I'm doing good. And then the school board appreciation, I'm wearing my golden bears for Sparks Middle School. Principal Sarah Peterson, it was wonderful to sit with students. We each got a couple of students that sat with us. I was with Ayesha and Allison, and with others that attended. We got to sit and talk with the students, but then we got to go on a tour, and I got to see the robotics room and see what they were working on and hear about the competitions that they have. They, they actually invite elementary schools to come up and have competitions also, which I thought was wonderful. They have a newsroom, GBNN, where they interview people and put forth news stories, very cool. Social studies, where they, they're talking about the GDP and unemployment. I mean, it's amazing things that they're doing there. And the wonderful thing was, got to attend this with other trustees, some of the employees in the district, and just to share that time at the middle school with those students, they're, they're proud of their school. They are, and they have a right to be, they have an absolute right to be. If there was a picture, I took a picture of this tree, and it's a thankful tree, and they, all the leaves had something that they were thankful for on this tree. I mean, it was just beautiful. They made signs of trustee Westlake and all of the trustees, it was, it was amazing. And the retreat we did on Sunday to go over balanced governance, the, it was, you would think losing that time on a weekend where you want to kind of recharge and relax, but I'll tell you, it really recharged my battery, and I felt so positive coming out of that and really learned things about myself that it, it was very interesting, and I'm very thankful for that time. So thank you to President Smith and everyone else. I know JJ worked on it, everyone else that worked on that for us. It, it was inspiring, so thank you.
Is that a plus 11, or do I have 11?
No, you went up. All right, well, just a quick shout-out to Sparks Middle School. I was unable to go, but I am a golden bear because I taught at Sparks Middle School. So thank you all for doing that. I have my little goodie bag. Thank you, President Smith, for grabbing that for me. I was out of town for work, so I was unable to attend, but Deputy Superintendent McMaster and I have hit the ground running with school visits. I don't think she really realized how many visits I was determined to, to make. I, I've set a goal to see as many of my 20 schools in the shortest amount of time, if possible. So we are, we are rolling. So we saw Dodson Elementary, and as I mentioned earlier, their attendance challenge is incredible. So on the right-hand side of that attendance challenge, those are all the prizes that students individually and classes can win for earning attendance, and you can see how their classes are across, getting closer to the challenges. So every Friday in the lunchroom, they have celebrations. The other thing that I really loved about, their student of them associated with our SCL pillars, and I love that, and I had the opportunity to sit in my friend Nicole's class, in her kindergarten class, and really get to see how our science of reading is working for our kindergarteners. So I had a great time at Dodson. And then we also visited Donner Springs, and I don't, Sarah was here. Sarah Cunningham joined us on that visit. Fun fact, that was my very first substitute teaching position at Donner Springs Elementary, so it was a little, little full circle there. We had a great time visiting their pre-K and their kindergarten, just incredible things happening at our schools. I have to say, I love all the flexible seating and learning that's happening in our schools. It's really cool to see. Let's see. And then we went and visited DePoli yesterday, was it just yesterday? Oh, my goodness. We had a really, really great time visiting their classes and really seeing that all of the different things the students are learning. We are really looking forward to reading the King Tut argumentative essays that we were a part of. They look really cool. So I can, I actually, I never thought I'd say this, but I asked the teacher to send us some essays, because I couldn't wait to read them. Never thought I'd say that. And then we visited Poliquita's, and Principal Lee set a very ambitious agenda for us, but as I mentioned, probably the best part of it was we got to sit and talk with these three fifth graders, who are part of the first full graduating class of Poliquita's. So they've been there since kindergarten, and they will be the first full graduating class, which is really, really cool. And another highlight of that was, they are using their literacy skills in, with their math, and that was a word wall with math words, which I thought was so great because the students created that word wall. So really great things happening there, and then, oh, I'm almost on time.
Yeah, I, I have to, I have to, I really do. I, it's, it's-
I know, I went- I know. I went up. Sorry, sorry.
It's okay. I have to maintain parity. I can do it for everybody.
I would just like to say-
Too much to happen. Too much happened.
I think the clock went faster for us.
No, we can't. Nope, sorry. There's no discussion among the board during the item. We're demonstrating all the different ways to do this, trustee Phoenix.
Three, two, one, ready, go. All right. No, I'll try to stay on task here. Uh, I had the luxury of going with Diane and Tammy Zimmerman over to the Reno High School Maintenance Office. And during that time, uh, we were able to chat with a gentleman who went away and then he came back. And the takeaway from that is that he liked the environment better here than he did on the other side where he thought it was a lot greener. So, it just kind of goes to where we, I continue to harp and I'll continue to say it. If it's good at home, it's going to be good at work. If it's good at work, you're going to get good performances. So, he came back. So, I thought that was good. Also, went to the JRL TC office. I didn't even know it was there at Reno High School. Um, and met with the director there who kind of gave us an overview about their drones and their competitions and their ideas moving forward, uh, to tourism, the whole thing. They were just going on a lot about that. So, just to hear the enthusiasm coming from them and their ideas was, uh, motivating. Uh, also went to Huffaker Menace to kind of, uh, get the, the history of that school. I driven past it as a police so many times. I didn't even know it was even existed right there. Um, the other is, I went to the, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Gala, uh, January 20th, where the Northern, uh, Northern Nevada Black Culture Awareness Society hosted a 37th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Gala. And the takeaway that I got at one of the speeches there was when the gentleman was talking about community. He kept going on about community. Community is important. You know, listen to the people, the needs of the people, that type of stuff. And to hear that our strat plan involves that and building those partnerships is huge and a big takeaway for me. Also, at Sparks Middle School with the leadership, and I am a golden bear and I do not have my shirt, but, uh, I, I did go there back in the day and I was very happy to sit and listen to the students and more importantly, to exhibit their leadership and their planning at that level. It was awesome to see. It was great. They had it all scripted up and they were dialed in. So, I was very proud to see that. Also, uh, the balanced governance takeaway with, uh, Thomas Salisbury. I did my first, uh, uh, balanced governance assignment and a lot was learned just by having a discussion with him and then, and on Sunday, you know, so just that takeaway so that you know that we are doing our homework and we are trying to make ourselves a lot better. And last but not least, uh, the, um, just today's presentations, the, the work that's going into it, you know, and I learned a lot from that, just listening to what's happening with you guys. So, that's just, uh, what I wanted to report to you guys today. So, thanks.
Thank you. All right, JJ, I'll wait until you get the first picture up. Um, so, okay, I've got my, my first picture up, but that's not what I'm going to start with. I would also like to congratulate Vaughn Middle School teacher Denise Trakas. So, this is the highest honor that there is in the nation. Um, there's about four million teachers in the US in the K-12 space and less than 100 get this Presidential Award, um, in this case for excellence in mathematics and science teaching. And so, I'm absolutely thrilled that one of our educators has been chosen for this. I'd also like to congratulate Reno High School for taking first place in the We the People State Finals. They will be going to Washington DC. So, incredibly proud of them. That brings me to the graphic that's right here. Um, there is another Dance with Grace Prom Boutique being held on Saturday, March 1st. So, any students, if they bring their student ID, they're able to come and shop, but a no-cost shop. So, prom is such an important part of a student's life, but it's very expensive to go, not just for the tickets, but to outfit yourself. And so, thankfully, the Dance with Grace, um, organization, um, which is from the Katie Grace Foundation, offers these no-cost prom boutiques for boys and girls. And so, I really encourage everybody in the community and students can also talk to their high school counselors as well. I'd like to thank Chef Wilhelm from HUG High School from the fantastic cookies that we were all provided for School Board Appreciation Month. Um, my next picture is I was very honored to attend the State of the State and, uh, see our own Damani Ranch High School Advanced Choir perform the National Anthem. And always a good time to remind everyone that the Washoe County School District has two of its talented educators as legislators as well. So, you see Assembly Member Martha Anderson and Selena LaRue Hatch. Um, I really had a joyous time with so many of the colleagues at the Martin Luther King Junior Dinner, also again, put on by the Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society. It was a beautiful event. I visited Libby Booth Elementary School and I'm very excited that they have a PTA forming because we know that when our families are involved with our schools, we have that connection so much tighter. I, um, was very pleased to, uh, join Superintendent Ernst with a meeting with Dr. Dorian Pollard from the Nevada State University in Henderson, which is a great mid-level organization, um, with a specific focus on creating educators for our state. The Sunday Full Day Professional Development and Training was really wonderful and I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for dedicating that time. We learned a lot and we accomplished a lot. And then that brings me, I'm not wearing the T-shirt, but I brought it to hold up the school board appreciation. I don't know if this was one of the pictures you were going to show, Colleen. That top one is all the colleagues, yep, all the trustees and, um, Associate Chief Hack Bush. And then you can also see how the students greeted all of us as we came into the school. Principal Sarah Peterson is an absolute star. Their motto is "Learning is Required" and, um, really impressed by them. All right, thank you. Um, that closes now item 4.02 and brings us now to item 4.03, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, everybody. And, uh, in an effort to give back some of this time that, uh, others may have, uh, enjoyed and taken advantage of, we will go ahead and, and work to, to be as concise as possible. So, I, I kid. Uh, they were all very fun events. Thanks for all of the attendance on the events. I had the opportunity to attend as well. All of what was said was outstanding. I'll share the one event that really struck my heart as an educator, um, and, uh, was really, uh, a wonderful, something to be a part of. On Friday night, we had, I had, I was asked to participate as a keynote speaker for the Northern Nevada Literacy Council on a pilot program that's been done to re-engage, uh, students that had been disengaged, uh, from high school and taken an adult ed path. And, uh, it was a, it was a reminder about why we all come into education and is that's to find ways, different ways to impact students differently so that they are successful and they have a great life in front of them. And so, at this, there was a partnership with our labor associations and, uh, students not only, uh, graduated with, um, their, 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 uh, GED, but they also, about one-third of them began pre-apprenticeships with some of our labor associations. And I thought it was just one of the ways in which we as an educational body and our community come together in different ways to support all of our students. So, that's the one that I'll share. Again, I, I want to say thank you for being an active part of our educational landscape, uh, for doing the visits that you all are. And appreciative of our administrators and, uh, Deputy Superintendent McMaster, who's been, uh, partaking on a lot of these visits. And I think it's great because it keeps us informed, it keeps us working together and doing good things for our students. So, give back the rest of that time.
Uh, you're so good, Superintendent Ernst. And we take that note under advisement. Okay, that closes Section 4 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 5, our closing items. And we welcome the members of our community for item 5.01, Public Comment. JJ, who are we welcoming first?
Sandy Tibbet.
Welcome, Ms. Tibbet. Thanks for being with us and for starting us off.
Sorry. Full disclosure is a required element of transparency and it helps in building a higher level of trust, which is necessary for a solid foundation. Whereas, act of non-disclosure and any following actions or reactions can be perceived as someone trying to hide something shady, which erodes trust. Agreed? I'm sure we all can agree. So, I left the January 7th special meeting with a huge red flag. My question to myself was why would President Smith give her three points to Mr. Eskamilia? So, after 5:00 PM on the 7th, I submitted two information requests. One was for the emails and texts between President Smith and Felipe and then another for Clark Woodley's emails and texts, um, during the December 10th meeting. December 9th, less than 48 hours later, I received Woodley's information back, but I was still waiting for Bess. Conveniently, I received the information back on January 15th, the day after the appointment of the new trustee and election of this year's board president. This lends to the perception of someone trying to hide something shady. I am naive to the whole appointment process. So, is it a common practice for board members to meet privately with candidates prior to a vote? And if so, shouldn't this be disclosed at the time of the voting to be ethical and transparent to the rest of the candidates and board members? It is concerning to me it wasn't disclosed, President Smith. That private meeting should have been, could have been misconstrued as an unethical and unfair advantage if Felipe would have been appointed. Don't you agree? I think you do. I think, after Lombardo's instruction, I think that it was why President Smith changed her vote on the 14th from Felipe to trustee Phoenix, which I am grateful. So, thank you. I also have to give you props, President Smith. Your question to the candidates was very clever and it tied nicely to these circumstances that I just outlined. That's damage control. That's how I saw it. So, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tibbet.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
I'm John Appolito. At the last regular board meeting, I made part one of these comments. To view them, you can go to our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children, or the WCSD's YouTube page, specifically at the very end of the last regular meeting. Part two. Over 10 years ago, both the left and right began writing about how all the personal student data being collected and stored forever, combined with the student profiles being created by all these free education vendors, may affect the future of our children. The largest free education vendor in the US and WCSD was sold to the Chinese. Students could use Edmodo for all their school subjects, plus there was a social media platform built in. After the Chinese bought Edmodo, the district refused to tell parents and required students to use the software for about another year. Eventually, the Chinese shut down Edmodo. Do you think the Chinese deleted any of the student or student profiles they have? When Fordham Law Professor Joel Ridenberg testified to Congress, US Congress in 2015, he stated he was concerned that student data from different sources would be merged into one database. Fast forward to the fight over the Chinese-owned app TikTok. Do you think the Chinese have merged student Edmodo data with TikTok data and whatever other data they have about our children? As Politico said in 2014, quote, "The data could be used to build profiles on them that might be of interest to employers, military recruiters, or college admissions officers," end quote. Now that the political winds had shifted, what may have been a positive student trait or belief in the past may now be a negative student trait or belief. The largest database ever created on US children is now in place and in WCSD is called Infinite Campus. Parents can request to view all the data IC will store forever about their children if they go to protectnevadachildren.org. Parents who have done this have been very surprised. Grades and test scores aren't the problem. It's the medical, discipline, minor discipline, counseling, MTSS, and psychiatric data that's the problem. IC shares the most incriminating data with others. Since there are no restrictions on who Infinite Campus can sell the company to, maybe the Chinese would be smart to give in on TikTok and simply buy Infinite Campus.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Michelle Scuduto.
Welcome, Ms. Scuduto.
So, I had wrote a letter, but first I'll just tell you a little bit of my background. Um, this is my 19th year teaching. I taught 15 years in California before we moved to Nevada. Um, I spent most of those years in general education and was lucky enough to be able to move to special education when we moved here because of the options program. So, that was really exciting because my heart was in special education from the beginning. Um, I'd like to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude for the unwavering support you provide to our educational community. Your commitment to enhancing the learning environment for our students is truly commendable. As a CLS teacher at the high school level, I work alongside one fellow CLS and one strategies teacher and all related service teachers who co-support our program and the 25 students we serve. The three of us share responsibility for all students rather than just our individual caseloads. We attend and co-write IUPs for all 25 students, each with varying disabilities and abilities, necessitating a high level of collaboration and dedication. Every day, I teach six different classes, including morning meeting, earth science, world history, transition job skills, economics, and life skills. In addition to this, I modify curriculum for our students participating in the general education classes, which entails adapting materials for six different students across three different general education classes. This requires ongoing communication and coordination with general education teachers to ensure all learners are engaged and supported. The curriculum for our special education self-contained classes is often lacking, with existing materials primarily benefiting middle-of-the-road students. We strive to provide modifications daily to support all learners, considering that many of our students have significant medical needs, including things like seizure disorders that require constant supervision throughout the day. My responsibilities extend beyond teaching. I'm expected to utilize the limited prep time I have each day to create and modify curriculum, write IUPs, manage staff, address medical needs, and train staff on medical procedures, all the special education paperwork that comes with, data collection and analysis, assessment, administration, and reporting, and coordinating meetings with my co-teachers and related services. Additionally, I play a key role in scheduling. We manage 25 individual student schedules, including grad plans for alternative diploma paths, job training schedules, staff schedules, bathrooming schedules, outing schedules, lunch schedules, and coordinating with nursing and medical needs. Moreover, we are the only three high school teachers responsible for managing the staff of nine aides and assistants, requiring weekly meetings and consistent flexibility to cover for any absences or unforeseen circumstances. The breadth of my responsibilities is significant and when talking to other high school teachers, it's extensive in its demands.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I think Superintendent Ernst would like to share something before you go too far, Michelle.
No problem. Michelle, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you're doing for our students, for our families, and we appreciate what you're doing and we hear what you're saying. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the work you're doing for our kids, uh, and, and really helping address all their needs.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
Teresa Anderson.
Welcome, Ms. Anderson. Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Teresa Anderson. I'm a one-on-one para-aid at Reed High School. My student has cerebral palsy and needs lots of assistance throughout the day. I start my day meeting him at his car, helping his mom get him in his wheelchair, and then throughout the day I take him to all his classes, help him get supplies out of his backpack that he needs for each class. In class, I keep him on task, take notes, assist him writing and typing as he needs, um, make sure he turns every assignment in and doesn't get behind. These are just some of my duties. He isn't potty-trained, um, so he wears a diaper. I change him as needed throughout the day. This, um, and the day depends on, you know, it depends on each day and occurrence and it could occur four to five times a day. He, he stresses at times, so sometimes we go more. As you can imagine, this, this function can, um, be very challenging. Another task is helping him walk more with his walker. He is, he resists it, but this, um, process, he resists this process, but- he resists this process, but so far, I've had him walking three to, two to three periods starting the beginning of January. One of our goals for him is to be independent as possible. He is now eating lunch with some of his football teammates. He was on the freshman team this past year. I help him get his lunch and open everything up for him, and then I leave him to eat with his friends. I then go sit and eat my lunch where I can see him to make sure he is okay, and if he needs me, they all know where I am. This helps him to socialize as much as, as is, this helps him socialize, and it is important and imperative to his age. I've only had, I've only had this small daily break throughout my employment as his aide at Reed, while, well, sorry, while still needing to maintain focus on him in case he, he would, he needs me. Sorry. My position, my position is both challenging and rewarding. I am a hard worker and I, and I care a lot about my student, and any, anyone I work with can attest that. I'm struggling to make my ends meet. I work two jobs. I work from seven fifty till ten o'clock at night and weekends. Unfortunately, have, have had serious consideration finding another job, but I am dedicated to my student and he, his family is, we are very suited together and would be devastating to leave. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Teresa.
I'd like to say thanks as well. Inspiring, thank you for what you're doing, and thank you so much for being a part of our team.
Heather D'Ariso.
Hi, Heather, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hi there. I'm a special education resource teacher that services students in kindergarten through fourth grade. I have over twenty years as a classroom teacher, but this is my second year in special education. I chose this role in special education because I always felt that it was calling out to me, and I just stepped up to answer that call. I'm here with some of my colleagues from my school, Jay Woodrago, and my family, who also supports my work that I do as a teacher. Hands down, the greatest joy in this job are my students, and I am so grateful that you're giving me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about that. There's nothing more rewarding to me than seeing them grow and progress towards their goal. I also have the privilege, because I am a resource teacher, that I get to be with them for multiple years, which helps me develop strong trusting relationships and tailor their support as they grow up. Building connections with families is another highlight of my job as it allows us to create a supportive network that fosters student success. However, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the challenges that we face. They're pretty significant. High caseloads make it difficult to provide the individualized attention our students deserve. I currently manage thirty-three students, which is almost ten students over the caseload. In our developmental pre-K, their caseload was just raised to a total of forty students in their morning and afternoon program, and a total of twenty-four of those students were on IUPs. So, with the IUPs and the caseload goes writing them, managing their data, connecting with families, talking to general education teachers. We're also one of the newest, well, we are the newest school in the district. It has, with high enrollment, and our administration counselors and staff work tirelessly to support all students, but are stretched very thin. Across the district, there's a critical need for more resources in both the special education and general education setting. Even when a school gets an allocation, sometimes those are unfilled. If you ever look at the job board, there are tons of special ed jobs that are unfilled. We are able to hire at our school because I stepped up to take on a student teacher, and then that student teacher was put into our resource role. No compensation or incentives for me or the student teacher, you know, to do that other than the outcome of having a great resource teacher. And although we're great problem solvers to do those things, step up and mentor and find people positions, we can't do this alone, we need help. We need special education teachers who feel supported and have the correct resources to help students. And we also need help in the form of different types of programs to support students. Special education is not a one-size-fits-all, and there's only a handful of options of programs where our students can go into. So, with that, I just want to tell you, I'm truly here for the kids, which is why I wear my shirt today, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Heather, we really appreciate you.
Alexandra Fuch.
Welcome, Alexandra.
I'm not good at speaking in front of adults, so. I'm just gonna look at my paper. Thank you for having me here, Superintendent and Board of Trustees. My name is Alexandra Fuch. I'm a strategies teacher with the district, and I have been teaching special education since 2016. If you know, Strategies is a self-contained program that provides systematic and intense instruction for all types of students. Today, I want to address a critical issue that affects the very foundation of our education system, the shortage of special education teachers and the lack of funding. According to the job board today, we have forty-five special education positions unfilled and twenty-two out of those forty-five are self-contained programs. There are forty-five paraprofessional jobs, including one-to-one aides, that remain unfilled. The shortage is just not a statistic. It represents a significant challenge for our students, teachers, and the entire community. Our special education teachers dedicate their lives to supporting students with diverse needs. However, the overwhelming caseloads and class sizes are leading to high burnout and low retention rates. Highly qualified individuals are leaving their positions because they're unable to keep up with the workload or the lack of necessary support staff to assist them. To address this, we need to hire passionate, qualified staff and offer proper pay and incentives to retain them. Competitive salaries, benefits, and professional development are essential. We also need increased funding for special education programs to provide necessary support for teachers and students. This includes hiring qualified paraprofessionals at a livable wage and ensuring they receive benefits. We also need to focus the smaller classroom sizes, reducing caseloads and ensuring that every student receives the individualized attention they deserve. Here are some examples of challenges current teachers are facing at our school. We have a very qualified individual in our EC strats class who would love to retain the strategies classroom but cannot find funding to get the endorsement to secure her job. So, we are requiring her to pay additional funds out of her pocket to be in a critical needs position and not offering any alternative paid methods. Another example is a highly qualified one-on-one aide in my classroom, working twenty-seven hours a week, struggling to make basic needs at fifteen dollars an hour without benefits. He's a great, and our aides are crucial to supporting our kids with disabilities. In conclusion, the shortage of special education teachers and the lack of funding is pressing issue that requires our collective effort. By investing in our educators and providing the necessary resources, we can create a supportive and sustainable environment for both teachers and students. We need to work together to ensure that every child receives the quality of education they deserve. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Poot. And we're the ones that thank you. This is your public comment time. And we can't do what we do unless we hear from you, so thank you so much.
Lori Henderson.
Welcome, Ms. Henderson.
I'm short. Okay. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Dr. Lori Henderson, and I am a pre-K strategies teacher at the Cold Springs Early Childhood Center. Thank you for your continued support of education within the district and allowing me to speak to you today. I want to highlight the challenges of self-contained programs and the critical need for sufficient adult support for students with intensive needs, including autism. Self-contained programs are designed to create structured, specialized learning environments for students requiring significant supports. However, students can't receive the individualized attention they need without enough trained adults. This impacts their academic, social, and emotional progress and creates safety risks for both the students and staff. In my classroom, I work with nine autistic students alongside one assistant. I had an additional aide for about a month, and then she left, leaving us understaffed. Seven of my nine students need adult supervision for behaviors like choking while eating, pica, which is eating unedible items, elopement out of the classroom up to forty times a day. Lunch occurs in the classroom, and we only have one special a week for about twenty minutes. My class runs five days a week with no staff breaks as one person alone cannot simply, effectively, and safely support nine students by themselves. Substitutes are often unavailable too, especially out in Cold Springs when we need days off. These challenges can be overwhelming between managing behaviors, changing diapers, monitoring students, following the curriculum, collecting data, with no time left for breaks or self-care. Asking just two people to handle a hundred and eighty days of high-demand work without adequate support is unsustainable, and it destabilizes the learning environment for students who depend on consistency. With adequate adult support, though, self-contained educators can provide individualized instruction, address behaviors more proactively, ensure student safety and staff safety, effectively collaborate, engage students in meaningful learning experiences, and foster essential skills like communication, daily living, and social interactions. It offers more time and opportunities for me to teach and work with my students on the individual skills they need to be successful, to best prepare them to transition into a less restrictive setting. In doing so, this allows students from self-contained programs to gain greater exposure to their typical peers, activities, and curriculum more successfully, improve safety, life, daily skills, social and emotional, and regulation skills they need to be successful, sorry, anywhere and go through their lives. Isn't this the ultimate goal for all our students is to move from a least, into a least restrictive environment and learn the necessary skills to be successful? I invite any of you to come spend a day in my classroom and see what I experience daily. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much, Dr. Henderson, for clarifying your title. It is very important that we recognize that and say thank you.
Michelle Hahn. Am I saying that right? Hogan, sorry, Michelle Hogan.
Hogan, welcome, Ms. Hogan, thank you for being with us.
All right. My name is Michelle Hogan, and I am one of three representatives from Washoe County School District on the NDE Board of Commissions for Professional Standards. And I am working, I've been working in Washoe County School District for fourteen years. Four years as a special education para-educator and ten as an EC sped teacher. I am currently an EC sped teacher and an itinerant special education teacher. Special education is my passion and always has been. In the beginning of the 2024, 25 school year, I was told by the higher-ups in special education that they had hoped we wouldn't see the high numbers of caseloads that we saw in the 2023, 24 school year, but they couldn't predict it. And because of the inability to find and hire EC sped teachers, it leaves them no option but to increase our caseloads. Fast forward to now, this is, this year, I've been verbally and physically abused and assaulted more times than I have been in the ten years that I have been teaching. I'm constantly trying to protect my three- and four-year-olds from the continued abuse in my classroom rather than teaching them the things that they should need for kindergarten, all while continuing to get more students in my classroom. My class size is often larger than many of my primary grade teachers, and every single one of my students has specialized needs with their IEP. The burnout is real and has been since September. But I'm expected to continue to be a team player, so when my colleague retires, I need to gladly accept three more students to my caseload and provide them with services that they need at a different site. So, when you, the board, are thinking about us, please consider the class sizes that we're facing and the para-educator pay and the needs of every single class because it's all very different. So, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Nikki Pitts.
Welcome, that was Nikki Pitts. Welcome, Ms. Pitts.
I'm bringing my support crew with me, okay?
Bring up the crew.
Great. Okay. Hello, everyone, hello, President Smith, hello, Vice President Mayberry, and represent our respected trustees. Thank you for your time tonight and your attention. Really appreciate it. My name is Nikki Pitts, and I am reading this comment on behalf of our amazing and wonderful colleague and department lead, Amy Jacobs. She could not be here tonight due to an ailing family member at this time. So, with further ado, I will read her comment. My name is Amy Jacobs, and I am a teacher of students with visual impairments and a certified orientation and mobility specialist in Washoe County School District. I was a classroom teacher for fifteen years, and during that great time, I had the great pleasure of teaching Vice President Mayberry's twin daughters while in first grade. They are now seniors in high school with bright futures ahead of them. So, my colleagues and I are special education teachers. Our roles are extremely specific and specialized, but not every general education teacher or special education case manager will have the experience of teaching a student who has low vision or a student who is blind. Our students are considered low incidence, but did you know that eighty to ninety percent of what a child learns is visual? Okay, so my colleagues and I are experts in teaching students who are blind or have low vision. It is our job to ensure that students who are blind or have low vision have an accessible learning environment. It is our job to ensure that students get an education that is equal to that of their sighted peers. We teach Braille. We teach incredibly specific assistive technology. We teach students to cross streets and intersections and also take public community transit. We are federally mandated to also teach what is called the Expanded Core Curriculum. We live and teach in a state and in a school district that does not have guidelines or standards for educating students who are blind or visually impaired. We live and teach in a state and in a school district that does not seem to understand the scope of our job and the depth of our vast responsibilities. We have a real need for improvement to our delivery model, to our massive caseload sizes, to our teacher evaluation rubric, to the training that we receive, and to the support that our paraprofessionals are provided. So, we want to be at the table with you guys. We want you to ask us questions, come on our lessons, please. We want to share more about what we do and why we do it. We need more training, instructional support, and trained paraprofessionals. So, every student matters, please help us to help our students.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you both, Nikki and also Amy. If you'll please extend our gratitude to her as well too, and the cheer squad, I very much love the vibe. It's like a Care Bear stare back there cheering her on. That's awesome, that's the way we support each other. Honestly, it's genuinely kind.
Danielle Reynoso.
Welcome.
Good evening, board members. My name is Danielle Reynoso, and I'm currently hired as an educational support professional in a strategies classroom. My job is to support my assigned student, assist the teacher, and contribute to the overall classroom environment. I help my student navigate their academic and life goals, ensuring that they have the tools that they need to succeed. But in the truth, my job doesn't end there. On paper, my contract defines my responsibilities, but in reality, my dedication extends far beyond those lines. I step in where I'm needed, not just for my student, but for other students, teachers, and staff. Because when I see a child struggling or when I see a educator overwhelmed, my humanity won't allow me to say nothing. This is a challenge that we as ESPs face every day. We're placed in situations where we must do more because we care, because we know that if we don't step up, no one else is. And yet, despite our dedication, we're not compensated fairly. We're not given the benefits that reflect the energy, the effort, or the emotional labor that we pour into these kids every day. We all know that we've, we all know that finding qualified ESPs is difficult, but finding ESPs who care, who go above and beyond because they believe in their students or their schools or their communities is even more rare. And yet, we're expected to give our all And yet, we're expected to give our all while receiving wages that don't match the value we bring. We're expected to work tirelessly without the security of benefits that would allow us to take care of our own well-being. For example, if a twenty-four-hour ESP were to receive just half an hour more per week, they would qualify for benefits that are essential for their health and their security of their jobs. This small change would make a huge difference, not only for the ESPs, but the overall stability and well-being of our school environments. This isn't just about fairness. It's about sustainability. How can we continue to give our best to these students when we are not given the support that we need to thrive? If we want to attract and retain compassionate, hard-working aides and ESPs, we must ensure that this role is treated with the respect and compensation it deserves. Tonight, I'm asking you to recognize the critical role that ESPs play in our schools. I'm asking you to advocate for better pay and for better benefits, not just as a reward for our dedication, but as an investment in the future of these children. Because when we are supported, we can better support them. Thank you for your time and consideration on this issue.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Thank you for what you do.
Colin Robertson.
Welcome, Mr. Robertson.
President Smith, Vice President Mayberry, trustees, and Superintendent Ernst. My name is Colin Robertson. For the record, I'm the Senior Vice President of Education and Research at the Nevada Museum of Art and former Chair of the Education Alliance of Washoe County Board of Directors. I first wanted to say that I have three kids in this district, and the public comments tonight make me very proud that they are students in this district, because they're people working really hard to make education good for our community. And I was glad to hear that there are some faculty from Jay Wood Raw here tonight, uh, as well, because I had the great pleasure of visiting Mrs. Bell's third-grade class there last week. Um, what a great experience that was in a beautiful new facility. I was here in the fall to share some information about teacher resources related to our exhibition, Deep Time Sea Dragons of Nevada, uh, with you and provide a copy of our teacher toolkit to each of you. There's a couple that I need to, um, replace. And I'm here to update you on that work at the museum and what we're doing with the exhibition, but also with our new building, the Charles and Stacy Mathiason Education and Research Center. The new building is a sixty-million-dollar investment in education downtown Reno, funded by private philanthropists and almost ready to allow us to start moving in. And it'll start to open to the public in phases beginning at the end of March. With regard to our exhibition about ichthyosaurs, Nevada's state fossil, we've been thrilled to welcome eighty-five different schools to the exhibition for tours and art projects since the exhibition opened in September. And that's been almost twenty-seven hundred students, um, in September, October, and November. December's a little bit of a, doesn't happen much in December. Um, but we've also been able to employ a young man, Keanu Valencia, who's also reached eight hundred and sixty-three students in, in classroom outreach programs that we're really excited to begin developing. And as of now, the students of the Redfield Academy at the Children's Cabinet are walking to the museum every other week for an hour, learning about art and museum careers, as well as how exhibitions are produced, and that's been really gratifying. The teacher toolkits that have been produced for the exhibition have reached all fourth-grade teachers in nine northern Nevada counties through collaboration with PBS Reno that has just been extraordinary. And we've been able to do a great deal of teacher professional development around that, including, uh, some upcoming professional development for Washoe County School District librarians at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, all coming to our new library that I administer in the new building, um, on April sixteenth, which is exciting. Um, I'm gonna stop there and just say thank you so much for the work that you do and, um, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much for this update call, and we really appreciate that. Thank you for taking the time.
The board received emails from Kristin DeHahn and Bernadette Godfrey related to general public comment.
Well, thank you. Um, so that closes item five point zero one, and I'm just something that I'll say. I mentioned it really quickly. Those who are frequent flyers of board meetings hear me say this a lot. We really appreciate when you thank us, but I want to be a hundred percent clear that these three minutes are yours, and we thank you for what you say, because we can't do our work unless we hear from the public. So thank you so much for everyone that spoke. And now for item five point zero two, the announcement of our next meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees will be February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. And now at six nineteen PM, adjournment. Thank you all so much. Bye.